Good morning, everyone. The Wednesday, April 4, 2018, NAGS Head Board of Commissioners meeting will come to order. Before we move into our regular meeting, I have several items that I'd like to take privilege to say now while, in particular, some folks are in the room. First, I want to thank our Police Department for their work during the March 24 Outer Banks March for our Lives Rally for Safe Schools. My thanks also extends to Angelina Lowe, who helped organize that event. Secondly, I'd like to thank our Police Department for the Easter egg hunt last Saturday. Thanks to the new location at Dowdy Park, it was two to three times as large as it has been in the past. Next year, they're going to need a bullhorn for the announcements and they're going to need more candy. This is a great outreach by our officers. Thirdly, I've been reminded to thank our staff, who helped keep US-158 clear of trash. They responded when I reported a bag of garbage on the road before it got scattered, and thanks to them, our stretch of 158 looks pretty great. And finally, as many of you know, NAGS Head residents Anna and Budgie Sadler suffered the untimely loss of their son, Jason Scott Sadler, on March 24. Anna was a NAGS Head Commissioner from 2001 to 2013, and she was a Dare County Commissioner from 1998 to 2000. Budgie was a NAGS Head Commissioner from 1969 to 1971. Budgie was a volunteer firefighter who retired with 20-plus years of service, ending his career as Assistant Chief. He played various roles on the NAGS Head Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors and was seminal in shaping the volunteer fire department's service levels in our community. Anna served for decades as Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary Member, and for many of those years, as Auxiliary Officer. She too helped to support the volunteer fire department with fundraising and operational and logistical support during emergencies. Anna and Budgie are members of our extended NAGS Head family, and we join them in their grief. And now, if you will please join me in a moment of silence. Now, as you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the adoption of the agenda, and a motion is in order.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. We have an agenda. The next item on our agenda would be recognitions. Cliff?
Yes, sir. First up, we have a new employee, David Ryan, who's going to welcome our new engineering technician, Mr. Jonathan Dozier, to start in March 19.
Good morning, Mayor and the Board. I would like to introduce to you Jonathan Dozier, who is filling our new Engineering Technician position. Jonathan comes to us by way of Virginia Beach, where he grew up, the youngest of six. He previously attended Virginia Tech, where he was about one semester shy of finishing his Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering. He is currently working towards that degree by taking night classes to go ahead and fulfill his civil engineering degree. Jonathan comes to us with a wealth of project experience by way of several engineering firms in the Virginia Beach area. He describes himself as self-motivated, extremely positive person, as well as strong interpersonal skills, I'm sure all of which will be tested in this new position. Jonathan currently resides in Virginia Beach with his fiancee Sarah and their two dogs, and he enjoys surfing, as well as soccer in his free time. Personally, I am very grateful to have Jonathan on board to assist with the ever-increasing project workload, and really look forward to working with him as we evolve this position. So I introduce to the Board Jonathan Dozier.
Police Chief Kevin Brinkley will recognize Police Sergeant Vince Hopson on his 10 years of service with the town.
Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. It's my privilege to come before you today to recognize one of our police officers for 10 years of service, Sergeant Vince Hopson. Sergeant Hopson is from Jacksonville and graduated from Jacksonville High School. He received a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Shaw University and a Master's Degree in Social Science Education from Appalachian State University. He graduated from Cape Fear Community College's Basic Law Enforcement Training Program in 1992. While working on his Bachelor's Degree, he worked part-time with the Topsail Beach Police Department until 1996, when he was hired by the Hickory Police Department. Knowing that he wanted to come back to the eastern side of the state to be closer to family, he applied for us and was hired as a police officer in 2008. And while we're recognizing Sergeant Hopson only for 10 years of service, he really has over 21 years of law enforcement experience, so he's a true asset to our department. He holds instructor certifications in rapid deployment, standardized field sobriety test, and physical fitness. He's also our representative for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Over the last several years, the Police Department has received thousands of dollars of free equipment from the Governor's Highway Safety Program, and it's under Sergeant Hopson's representation of that that we're able to get that free equipment. Sergeant Hopson is married. He and his wife have a beautiful daughter. They live in, on Roanoke Island, and in spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family and working out.
Next, we have Fire Chief Kevin Zork, who's going to recognize Fire Captain John Harris for 20 years of service with the town.
Morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. It's ironic that just before John got in the door, he said, "Chief, when can I take this suit off and get back on the fire engine?" Because you know I hate this stuff. Well, John, 20 years is a very commendable and wonderful benchmark to reach in your career, and I'm very here to congratulate and recognize you here today. John lives in Columbia with his wife Dee, has two children, Jeremy and Kelly. He's, of course, been with the Fire Department for 20-plus years, but he also spent about 13 to 15 years in the volunteer fire service in New Jersey, so he's got quite a bit of accumulated service. John is a US Marine, doesn't let us forget it. He's hardcore, he pushes. You can see this is one of his favorite hobbies. He loves to ride his Harley, loves to, on his time off. You know, he is quite an asset to the fire service here in the Outer Banks. John is a jack of many trades. He's a certified electrician. He manages and completes maintenance projects at both fire stations, saving the town a lot of money. And again, he's very well-certified as a firefighter EMT, a fire officer, a fire inspector, and he currently is helping to co-manage our Fire Risk Reduction and Community Hazard Prevention Program. That's for the entire town, the entire department. He supervised the 2017 Fire Prevention Night, it was wonderful and successful. We had probably 400 people attend that event, and he kept everybody on task every minute of the night, that's for sure. John achieved an Associate's Degree in Fire Science before it was really cool to do that, and he's one of the best fire officers and firefighters we have in NAGS Head. Captain Harris is proficient at automobile extrication, leading emergency teams. There's nothing he'd rather do than operations, and he continues to attend the National Fire Academy in order to bring more skills to the town. And these, his long list of educational credentials really improve our operations. He had 265 training hours in 2017, responded to 131 calls, and, you know, while Captain Harris has a pretty hard exterior and comes off as pretty gruff sometimes, he is deeply concerned about firefighter emotional health. A few years ago, he became certified in Critical Incident Stress Management in order to help deal with some of the post-traumatic stress that his peers might go through, and some of those emotional challenges that come up after tough calls. So he definitely has got a soft little spot in his heart. This leads to, these accomplishments leads to emphasize the positive impacts he has produced in town. I went through his file, and I just tried to find, just real quickly, got three accommodation letters. "On September 12, 2011, you responded in Engine 21 to an ocean rescue call in the vicinity of 8645 Old Oregon Inlet Road. Upon your arrival, you participated in removing two victims exhausted and in serious distress and near submersion from the waters of the ocean. You subsequently initiated first aid measures, and after patient treatment, one adult and one youth were released without any apparent medical deficiencies." On September 15, 2011, you responded to a medical rescue call in the vicinity of 7228 South Virginia Dair Trail. Upon your arrival, you participated in the delivery of treatment for a pulseless and non-breathing patient in immediate need of first aid support. You quickly and efficiently initiated first aid measures, and the patient was transported to a local hospital and soon released without any medical consequences." Just the list goes on and on of all the great things he's done and the lives that he's impacted. John is a great dad, husband, grandfather, and friend. When not working, he enjoys hanging out with his bike club, riding his Harley thousands of miles. He really gets around the country. I can always rely on John to give me his opinion, and it's never censored. Sometimes it's brutal, but it's what we all need to hear as managers. He's very honest, and he'll tell me how, he thinks the department is operating, and he'll also give me thoughts on how to improve the department. So he helps us all be better leaders. Captain Harris, in conclusion, congratulations on achieving 20 years of service in the town. Thanks for your dedication, loyalty to the community, and the lasting positive contributions over your significant career. Your efforts have saved lives and eased much pain, and those are rare gifts indeed.
Mayor, we have Fire Chief Zork again for a couple of recognitions, starting off with Deputy Chief Shane Hite for Certified North Carolina Fire Investigator.
Of course, you all know Deputy Fire Chief Shane Hite. He was recently certified as a North Carolina Fire Arson Investigator in the state of North Carolina. He has been in the Deputy Chief position for five years. He's my right hand, takes care of all the things that I can't, and is around when I'm out of town. He has been with the town for almost 15 years, so you're going to see him again shortly. He directs the town's safety program, leads the fire inspection program and prevention and risk programming, among many other things. He's very adept at repairing apparatus, and I can't tell you what an excellent incident commander he is. His emergency operation scenes always seem to get better and improve and have a positive outcome, making those bad scenes a little bit better. Lives in Collington, has three daughters, a son, girlfriend Stephanie. Shane is big on family time. He's probably one of the best dads I know. He's a great role model for his kids and a mentor to the entire fire staff as well, every day, without fail. He's very consistent. He's completed 261 training hours in 2017, ran 64 emergency responses. In 2016, he received his Fire Bachelor's Degree in Fire Science from Fayetteville State University, and that's something we've not recognized previously, so I want to congratulate him on that. But the certification process for fire investigator is difficult. It's not a quantitative process. You don't need to check off boxes in order to get this. It's a combination of education, training, and experience, and different point values are assigned to those different components. And they go through a very stringent review process. Once the application is submitted, it takes months and months to find out whether you actually have met the grade. And indeed, it requires a deep understanding of fire behavior, flame shred, based on fire chemistry, fire dynamics, and physics. You have to have a critical eye, and you also need to be able to back off and take a balcony view and look at fire scenes to determine what the fire cause determination was. But most importantly, Shane's certification provides a valuable capability to the town, helps us determine fire cause so that present or future risks might be eliminated, regardless if the fire is accidental or intentional. A Certified North Carolina Fire Arson Investigator helps fulfill our legal obligation to investigate thoroughly, investigate every fire. Closing, congratulations Deputy Chief Hite on your accomplishments. Thank you for the time you spent getting this certification, for your continued enthusiasm for acquiring new knowledge and making NAGS Head a better and safer place for our residents and visitors. Thank you.
Tanner Mann, driver-operator with the Fire Department, is going to be recognized for achieving his Bachelor of Science after it's cool.
After it's cool, right? Tanner Mann was up before the Board for his five-year recognition just a few short months ago. Rather than rehash all of those wonderful things that he's done, I'll just let you know that in December, he received his Bachelor of Science, Fire Science Degree from Fayetteville State University. And he's completed all of this training in five short years, working full-time, going to school full-time. He has a family. Melissa is here, his wife Melissa, and his son Blake. Couldn't be with us today, but they live on Roanoke Island. Tanner's an active member of Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department. He continues to be a lieutenant there, so he gives back to his community. Tanner completed this 90-plus hours of his Bachelor's Degree, again in December, in the Fire Science core curriculum topics. In addition to those, he studied ethics, civic engagement, governmental operations, global literacy, humanities, social science, critical thinking, quantitative reasoning, and communication skills. So I want to thank you for going through all of that. We know it was tough, and we're glad that you went through and you're bringing all that back to the Fire Department. It's really rare to find an individual with this type of drive and motivation for learning that Tanner possesses. He's just like the Energizer Bunny. He just continues to go to more and more training and bring it back and apply it. Completing this academically rigorous educational process shows his dedication to the fire service and to the town, verifies his ability to complete equally challenging jobs within the Fire Department. And I want to congratulate you, Tanner. Thank you for building resilience here in the town in NAGS Head. Keep up the good work.
Now, we have Public Works Director, Mr. Ralph Barrell, is going to recognize Barbara Mentor for her many years with the town and, on our sad occasion, her happy occasion of retirement.
And that's very true. This is not going to be very easy for me, to be honest with you. Just to give the audience a little bit of background, Barbara came to work first part-time here in 1995. She worked here for about a year, and somebody's wisdom hired her full-time in 1996, in June of 1996. After that, Barbara stayed at Town Hall for about six years, worked administrative services. In 2003, she transferred up to Public Works, which, coming from Town Hall and that office setting to Public Works office setting is a little bit different. It's like going from the classroom into the gymnasium. When you're only one or two women at that time and 30 men, it's a little different. But Barbara worked right in, like she never missed a beat. It's like she was there, you know, her whole life. Barbara always said that it was like family up there, and really, until she retired, I really realized it is really like family. Barbara's been there to help me through the passing of my parents, and she's been there to help me celebrate the birth of all my grandchildren. So going through all those years, sitting back and thinking, you know, we really are like family up there because we are a very close knit group, to be honest with you. The other thing I will tell you is, if you want to really, truly find out what somebody does, let them retire. Because when you start looking around, say, "Well, who's going to do this now that she's not there?", you start to think, wow, how did I miss all of this? You know, the whole time we were there, because Barbara just did it, never complained, did her job, plus a lot of other jobs that I handed to her and the superintendents handed to her. Durante came in the other day and asked me, said, "Who am I going to hug?". I said, "Well, you can hug me every once in a while, but I'm not going to hug you every day like you did Barbara." That was his thing. He was going every day and hugged Barbara every day. On that note, you know, I would just like to say that she is going to be very truly missed at Public Works by everyone up there. Like I said, we had a luncheon for her on last Thursday, and everybody wished her well. And after Barbara left, everybody said the same thing, you know, how truly, she was already missed. But to tell you just how Barbara is also, before she left, she left her predecessor a gift. I don't know what it was, but she left the predecessor a gift on the, because on the desk. I asked her, I said, "Does somebody gave you a gift?". She said, "No, I'm leaving this for Megan." And Monday morning, it was the end of the month, and we always close out at the end of the month, and Barbara is a, was a big part of closing out. Well, Monday morning about 9:00, I hear the door open, and it's Barbara saying, "Good morning." I said, "What are you doing here? The first day of your retirement, and you're back here?". "Well, I just wanted to bring everybody thank you notes to who had given me things", and I said, "That was it." "Well, I just wanted to make sure that everything was okay when we were closing out today. Everything went smooth." I said, "Okay." And so she hung around for maybe a half hour, 45 minutes, and answered any other questions anybody had, and that was it. So on that note, I would just like to say thank you, Barbara. Mayor, I think you have something to give her?
I do. I'm going to come around and hope somebody's equipped to take the picture.
Too many years of working in our office, you just do stuff like that.
Well, I don't know what to say. I had the pleasure of attending a luncheon last week, and that sense of camaraderie was very evident, the appreciation that they all had for you was very evident, the love that they had for you was clear, and I could tell that they're all going to miss you down there very much, and we're going to miss you very much. So we appreciate, we wish you the best and love. We have a plaque of recognition for Barbara Mentor, grateful appreciation for your dedicated and loyal service from the town of NAGS Head, 1996 to 2018.
April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and if I may, I'd like to read this proclamation. Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2018 Proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities that they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development and resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, we, the Town of NAGS Head Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and co-upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, this the fourth day of April 2018. Having heard the proclamation, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board will welcome public comment. The Board does that at all of its regular monthly meetings. Anyone who wishes to address the Board is asked to, please, go to the podium, tell the Board where you live and your name, and then address your remarks to the Board. It is not appropriate to pose questions to individual commissioners or to attempt to dialogue with individual commissioners. This is an opportunity to address the Board as a body. Also, the Board does not usually respond to public comment or answer any questions during public comment, and there is a five-minute time limit for all people speaking at public comment. So with those details, anybody who wishes to address the Board, if you'll please approach the podium.
My name is Michael Kelly. I reside at 436 Villa Dunis Drive. I used to reside at the one, at 2316, on the bypass, but I don't anymore. So that's where you used to see me. If you remember me, I used to be in that area. Anyway, I've come to thank the town of NAGS Head, and I thank this Board right here, not for what you've done particularly in the past for the support of the parade, but what the staff has done. I know, where's Big Ralph? Has he left already?
No.
Big Ralph does a whole lot. Kevin does a great deal on Parade Day. And then we have the Fire Department leaves the parade and does a wonderful job, and then we have the Planning Department's even involved, and we even had Cliff do a And then we have the planning departments even involved, and we even had Cliff do a few things. That's a well-rounded and a big opportunity. But we had our twenty-ninth annual Kelly St. Patrick's Day Parade. It went off, it was probably the quickest parade we've had since the first or second parade, and it had more people. As an FYI to you, we had ninety-two units in the parade, we had nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight people in attendance at the parade, and one thousand four hundred and twenty-one participants in the parade itself. So we thank you very much. I would also like to say that we have been in a state of flux, and there was a great deal of questions about a variety of different things about the parade. Would the parade continue? What about the party after the parade and everything such as that? And I am very pleased that this board initiated a conversation that was held yesterday between the representatives from Kelly's and the parade, from the mayor and the mayor pro temp, and from representatives from the Dare County Visitors Bureau. And we had a very fruitful conversation, moved in some good directions, and we've got some really good plans and things that we're going to be looking at for the thirtieth St. Kelly-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And we're not looking at disbanding the parade, we're just, I think the sense of community and everything, the positive aspects that come out of the parade are very much appreciated throughout the community, and especially throughout the town and throughout the county. So we thank you very much for your support, and you'll be hearing about some new things that'll be developing, probably not until October and November. We'll sort of keep them under wraps until that time, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Next.
Hey, we're not going to be closing the vault. Good morning. My name is Constantine Zenovis. I live at four thousand six South Virginia Dare Trail, and the owner of Mulligan's. Come here this morning to tell my story about our fire and how well the town responded to our needs. We were very fortunate, or unfortunate, that we had a fire. We're very fortunate that the wind and Naggshead's Fire Department were able to appear very quickly and control it, and we only lost a couple of sheds as opposed to losing the entire building. My thanks to Naggshead Fire Department for what they did. Thank you. Shane was there right away and took care of everything, and of course, Kevin was there the next day, giving me support. Also, with that, I would like to thank Naggshead, Kelly, and the Development Department, and they came right up to me and said, hey, look, what can we do to help you get this done quicker? So that was it. Shannon and I really do appreciate it. We were saved a lot of hardship. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zenovis. Next.
Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Gary Oliver, I own the Outer Banks Fishing Pier. I hear you're talking about beach nourishment today, and I've just got a few comments. I received a call about three weeks ago from a neighbor in South Naggshead, and she said, it's back. And I went, I said, what? She said, the water. Her neighborhood was flooded. The hurricanes in sixteen and seventeen, it's taken our beaches, and the nor'easters this spring have taken our dunes. In a lot of places, it's ocean overwashed, and it's something we'll see from now on. In South Naggshead, we had overwashed in about four locations, we had sand on the road, and it's closed at times. I was really upset about the bids. We expected the bids for two thousand and eighteen to be lower than two thousand and nineteen, and I know that fifty-two is a lot higher than thirty-six. But we need the beach nourishment done as soon as we can. I don't know if you can go back and talk to these people again, and I just wonder why the bids are so high for two thousand and eighteen and lower for two thousand and nineteen. I don't understand, and maybe the staff can go back and find out, but we need it done now. We'll be seeing more bulldozers on the beach and more ocean overwashing. Fortunately, since two thousand and ten, we've had no infrastructure damage in Naggshead. It saved the town a lot of money, and I'm afraid in the near future, if we have a bad story, we'll see a lot of it. And I just hope there's something y'all can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
I'm Marvin Demers, live at eighty-eight nineteenth South Old Oregon Inlet Road. It's a real privilege for me to be able to address this board this morning on my favorite subject, which is beach nourishment. First of all, I'd like to recognize the efforts of previous boards going back to two thousand and nine, ten, and even before that, when there was so much up in the air about beach nourishment, and the town staff, and CSNE and Great Lakes for the great work that they did in the two thousand and eleven beach nourishment. That level of effort, in my opinion, set a gold standard for beach nourishment projects for any town, particularly for Outer Banks towns. And here we are again, and I would like to thank the staff and the support from this board for the efforts over the past few months to set the stage for possible nourishment this year. After getting a slow start over the past couple of years for various reasons, political and otherwise, we were a little bit behind the eight ball for planning for the next nourishment cycle. But the staff pulled together and put all the ducks in a row so that it would be possible to nourish this year. The question is, are we going to or not? And I think many of us were just crushed when those bids came in, as Mr. Oliver just mentioned, and the bids were so much higher for eighteen than for nineteen, and it seemed a foregone conclusion that we would not nourish in eighteen. But that left us with the prospect of severe damage and continued overwash and problems and loss of the entire dune, much of which we've lost already, for the next year and a half or so. That bothered me to the extent that I started relooking the numbers for the bids and looking at what the possibilities were. My non-professional, I'm not a coastal engineer, my analysis is that if we renourished in two thousand and eighteen and stayed within the budget that has already been established for the next nourishment cycle, we could get about two-thirds of the amount of sand on the beach that we, two-thirds of what the design volume is. And the question is, is it worth it to get a two-thirds gold standard for nourishment in eighteen, or do we wait for nineteen and incur whatever happens between now and then? My opinion is, we'd be better off to go ahead, we can stay within budget, get two-thirds of a gold standard nourishment, which would provide the protection that we need, but for a shorter period of time than if we got the gold standard. In turn, what would this mean down the road? It probably would mean that we'd better line up with the other towns for the next nourishment cycle. There would be savings for deployment, as you know, deployment and redeployment of the equipment for any beach nourishment project is a huge portion of the expense. So if we can team up as a Dare County project for the next future cycle, then we could save a lot of money there, and we'd have protection in the meantime. This is going to be a tough decision for the board here, and I would suggest that you take a serious, hard look at the options of two thousand and eighteen versus two thousand and nineteen, and I wish you well in your decision processing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Demers. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? All right, at this time, we will conclude the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy. The next item on our agenda are the Earth Day events.
Mayor, we're very fortunate to have Ms. Ann Daisy, who's, she wears many hats, three at the moment, I think.
I've lost count.
Since I last saw you a week ago, you probably added some, but with Dare Soil and Water Conservation, she's here to talk about Earth Day, but I do just want to take a moment to thank her for all that she's doing for the town, and we are totally taking advantage of her and all the hats that she wears. She's helping us with our stormwater issues and helping us with some of the alligator weed in the ditches, and she's a resource that we can point the public to when they're having issues on their own property. We're very pleased that we are hoping to form a relationship with Earth Day moving forward and have encouraged her to consider Doughty Park as the home for Earth Day moving forward. So just very fortunate and thankful to have her here.
Thanks, Cliff, and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. So to add on to what Cliff mentioned about what I do for Dare Soil and Water Conservation, I'm a community conservationist and have been for the last just two and a half years. A long story, and if you have free time, I can tell you the whole story later, but I'll keep it short for everyone's, for the time being. And recently have been hired with Dare County to fill the vacant grants and waterways position. So they have combined the grants and waterways duty with my soil and water conservation duties. And like Cliff said, part of my role with soil and water conservation is to provide technical assistance to both public and private landowners in drainage, flood issues, as well as recommendations on retrofitting or installing best management practices to help reduce stormwater runoff with the ultimate goal of improving water quality. I work with a district board of supervisors where we come to agreement on areas in our watershed that are impacted and impaired that need more attention. For example, the soundside beach access at Jockeys Ridge here in Naggshead. Part of my partnership prior was with North Carolina Coastal Federation, and so we were working on doing a watershed restoration plan more to happen and to tell you about on that later. But here, for talking about Earth Fair, this will be the sixth time that Earth Fair has happened here on the Outer Banks, usually trying to happen on actual Earth Day or in the vicinity of. I will not take credit for Earth Fair and the inception of, it originally started at Jeanette's Pier by seasonal staff, a good friend and colleague, Lydia, who has since moved on, but a group called the Coastal Environmental Educators Network that exists here, there's a lot, that exists here on the Outer Banks, consists of a lot of environmental entities and educators here that do similar things but in different ways. For example, National Park Service participates, Jockeys Ridge State Park, the North Carolina Aquariums, we even get participation from children and youth partnership, Dare Soil and Water, the North Carolina Coastal Federation is actually the lead in keeping that group coordinated and coming together to, for partnerships, to collaborate, and as such as this event, Earth Fair. So in previous years, it has taken place at Jeanette's Pier, at Jockeys Ridge State Park, at the aquarium, and so we've struggled to find a central location. With the new construction of Doughty's Park being a wonderful location, a visual location for the public, we think having the event there this year will provide better recognition to a lot of the environmental groups here on the Outer Banks and to get more participants to come. So Sarah Halas with the North Carolina Coastal Federation is the lead on Earth Fair, and I have stepped in to participate and help with that as my role as a community conservationist with Dare Soil and Water, and she is out of town, unfortunately cannot be here today. And we have been working with Cliff and Michelle Gray on the permit and the application process to make sure everything runs smoothly considering a town-wide trash pickup event during the Earth Fair. And my role as Dare Soil and Water in Earth Fair, I have been doing some research and information on trees as management for stormwater. We all knew, and at least I did as a little girl growing up, that trees are important and we should never cut them down. Well, as I've grown older and was a minor in forestry at Virginia Tech, learned even more of their importance and what they provide for our community. So I have been working with David Ryan and planned to do, with permission, planned to do a tree planting at Earth Fair for Dare Soil and Water. A lot of conservation districts across the state do tree sales or planting events, and I wanted to start to incorporate that as a typical soil and water event, but also to improve stormwater management here in Dare County. So I've been working with David. We've done a native tree selection and placement on the south boundary of the park, separating between the school property and on the edge, and knowing that there's a phase two coming, taking that into consideration on where the trees would be placed. So if you have any questions about Earth Fair or anything, I'd be glad to answer it for you.
Great.
Thank you. And I've been meaning to introduce myself, but I do have a very full workload, and like Cliff said, maybe three or four hats I wear now. But do look forward to continuing working with the town in managing stormwater runoff and keeping our water quality clean for recreation and fishing purposes.
The date and time for the celebration?
April twenty-second. It is a Sunday, that's actual Earth Day, and will be one to four P.M. And I think we're, besides the tree planting, there'll be, we're getting a lot of vendors still signing on, mostly environmental education groups, and we're thinking about inviting maybe earth-friendly vendors to make it a little bit more exciting and for all ages that will contribute. And we have been working with Michelle, and she does have the flyer, and we'll be posting it with town social media as well.
Great. Thank you for bringing this event to Doughty Park. We love seeing events in our park. Thank you for your contributions to the planting plan there, and for, in part, the cleanup that will be part of that day, all that's pretty awesome stuff. So anybody else?
No, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item three. I'd like to have a separate approval for that, so I have a couple of minor corrections.
Okay. Thank you very much. So you've heard the motion, and I have a second. So the motion is to approve the consent agenda with item three removed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. And it's my understanding that we can go ahead and move to the correction of those minutes. So Commissioner Walters, if you would.
Yes. This is regarding the minutes from our Board of Commissioners Retreat Workshop on January eighteenth and nineteenth. The first item is page two, under the alignment exercise, under a statement by me, it needs to say the existing role has been that board members utilize input from committees. It was not, it just sounded like that was the current role, but that was the previous role, the previous board. We had goal areas and worked with committees. So we could make that change with approval of the board. And then on page four, under lines of communication, the first sentence is, should, the words were just reversed, should say, when is it okay for a board member to speak directly to an employee? And it was just backwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Make those corrections.
And I have one correction. There's a paragraph referencing the planning department. That was my language, that was unnecessarily specific. The intent was to clarify roles and responsibilities there, not to direct a specific staff position. And so with that correction, a motion to approve the minutes as corrected would be in order.
So move.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the corrected minutes from the retreat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda would be public hearings. Mr. Leidy? Isn't that right?
Stat, we're requesting the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Removing that.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Staff has recognized the need for additional time to be able to analyze this public hearing a little bit more. So, we're asking that the board consider removing this to a later date. Give us time and potentially take it back to the planning board.
Thank you very much. Do we, can we just do that sort of by acclamation that that's, do we need a motion?
I'll just ask if there's anybody here that planned on speaking at the public hearing?
I don't see anyone.
Then I have no questions.
Okay. No issues then, I think. We'll just do that by acclamation. Thank you. The next item then would be reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director.
Morning, Mayor and board members. Just wanted to provide you with an update of the Focus UDO project. Our technical committee met again on Tuesday, March 13th, to discuss the table permitted uses. We're working our way through that. But specific to the Highway 12 corridor, the meeting agenda materials are available on the website for review by the public. And we're continuing discussion through email to wrap up a few issues on that. At the same time, staff is reviewing the draft of the Articles seven and eight portions of the UDO. And the next step will be to get that portion of the draft out to the technical committee for review.
Great. Thank you, Holly. I appreciate your leadership through some difficult discussion and helping us get our momentum back. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be consideration of a site plan submitted by Coastal Engineering on behalf of Jim Cap. Holly, yes?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Quickly try to pull up site plan for us, maybe not. As you noted, this request is a site plan review being submitted by Coastal Engineering and surveying on behalf of Jim Cap Development. The proposal is to construct a 6,000-square-foot, one-story structure for retail purposes at 6813 South Croatan Highway. Currently, that piece of land is vacant. There is a small accessory, accessory structure tucked away on the east side there. Okay, here we go. I might be able to pull it up. That property, it's Zone C2, general commercial. All the other properties around it are also Zone C2, general commercial, except the properties that butt up to the east side are developed residentially. It's located in a flood zone AE9. And we do have that one-foot freeboard requirement. So, first-floor elevation here would need to be at a base flood elevation of 10. And that is perfect, I think. So, you can see on their site plan, they're proposing a first-floor elevation of 10.2. So, as far as flood compliance, they have acknowledged the required elevation there. It is compliant with their 2017 comprehensive land use plan and the requirements of that. So, just a quickly run through some dimensional requirements here. Lot coverage for this property can be 55%. And the proposal is at 50.9% lot coverage. So, they are compliant. Their building height, this structure can be as tall as 35 feet. They can actually go to 42 with an 812 roof pitch. When you look at the architectural sheets, they do have an 812 roof pitch. So, they can be at 42, they're coming in at 40. So, they are compliant with height. We will require a height certification at the proper time, just to ensure that. Commercial structures of this size have to obtain 125 architectural design points. And they're coming in at 127 architectural design points. They're using, as you can see here, porches, dormers, the 812 pitched roof, and simulated wood shingles for their siding to acquire that 127 points. For parking, they've used the retail standard to provide adequate parking. They need 28 parking spaces based upon the area. They have proposed 37 parking spaces. So, clearly, they are compliant. I will note, when you look at the site plan, they have the 6,000-square-foot structure divided up into Unit A and Unit B. And Unit A is coming in at 4,000 square feet, Unit B's coming in at 2,000 square feet. For the time being, all 6,000 square feet will be utilized as retail, but it is hopeful that in the future, Unit B, the 2,000-square-foot portion, might become a restaurant. So, with that in mind, they've gone ahead and proposed a parking standard that would meet that requirement. As far as buffering and landscaping, I went into quite a bit of detail in your staff report with that. So, I won't, I won't read through all of this, but essentially, on the, the front yard adjacent to 158, there's a requirement there for an increased buffer area of 15 feet adjacent to 158 being left in its natural state. And then, beyond that 15 feet, a 10-foot wide buffer to be imposed. That's a pretty significant, a pretty significant buffer. Historically, we've allowed people to put some of their stormwater management measures into that 15-foot wide natural area immediately adjacent to 158. So, as you can see, they've proposed that as well, and that is compliant. But if you look just beyond that, they do not have the full 10-foot two rows of plantings that's required by that buffer. What they do have is about five feet for the majority, except it pinches down to maybe like one foot in this area. But we do have a section of the town code that allows an applicant to request an alternative method of landscaping or buffering. And they have made that request via narrative that was included in your package. And they've justified that by, it is one row of plantings, but it is a thick row of vegetative plantings. They are plantings that are native to this area and that are on our recommended planting list, and they are proposing to irrigate not only this area, but the entire lot. So, with that said, they are asking that the board consider approving an alternative landscape plan just along this western boundary, along 158. Staff finds that what they have proposed does meet the intent of the ordinance, and staff would recommend approval of the alternative. Along the north side of the property boundary here, really, the only area where a buffer yard is required is here where this parking is located. As you can see, they've proposed a vegetative buffer along the entirety of the northern boundary. So, that excess buffering actually will go towards their preservation, their, you can preserve 10% of your lot or preserve, preserve 10% or plant 15%. So, these additional plantings will actually go towards the planting preservation numbers. The same goes along the rear boundary. As we noted, this is C2. It is developed residentially, though. There's not an actual buffer requirement here, required here because it does a buck commercial, but they've gone ahead and provided a significant buffer area here. So, this in turn counts towards that 15% lot area planting calculation. And then, over here, adjacent to Grouse Street, where you do have parking adjacent to a right-of-way, a five-foot wide buffer yard C must be applied. And they have shown that and actually have shown a buffer yard in excess of that. So, setbacks in buffer yards are compliant. As I noted, they have planted a significant percentage of the lot. The ordinance would require that 15% of the lot area be planted, which would equate to 6,674 square feet. They've planted 6,701. So, they do have ample vegetation proposed on the lot. And they do comply with their interior parking lot landscaping. As you can see, they, they've shown landscaping along the parking areas and within any pocket within this parking area for a parking island. They did provide a lighting plan that's been reviewed and approved by staff. We do not have signage on this application just yet, but that does require a separate zoning and building review and approval. So, of course, that'll be reviewed prior to issuance of any permits. For wastewater and sewage disposal, this one was a little bit interesting. And at the appropriate time, the applicant might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I can. But they have proposed, and the Dare County Health Department has approved, two conventional septic systems with two repair fields. That is shown on your plan, as well as the approval letter from the Dare County Health Department. It's my understanding that when and if this becomes a restaurant, the septic system will need to be upgraded to an innovative or an LPP system. But not knowing when and if that's coming, they have opted to accommodate the septic design with two individual conventional systems. They do know that if this, if a restaurant does come down the line, it would be considered a change of use, and this would be coming back to the board. As part of that, an updated septic design would be required. As far as stormwater management, our town engineer has reviewed and approved the stormwater design. And comments from the town engineer were included in your packet in a March 16th correspondence. The same goes for traffic circulation as well. His comments are outlined in that same memo of March 16th. I would note that along US 158, there is a proposal for a ride-in, ride-out only here. So, that's detailed as well. Of course, that will require NCDOT encroachment agreement be provided prior to construction. Fire has reviewed the proposal and finds it adequate. And would just note that it does have to comply with the fire prevention code. Same for Public Works, they reviewed and approved the proposal, including the location of the dumpster for a front-end load. So, with that being said, staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the town code. And the planning board also, at their March 20th meeting, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the site plan as it's been presented, noting the comments made by the town engineer in his March 16th report. And also recommend approval of the alternative landscape design. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. We do have Carlos Gomez with Coastal Engineering and Paul Williams with Jim Cap available. If you have any questions with them.
Great.
Yes, sir.
One quick question. I know Jim Cap is the developer, but Sarah Forbes Estate is the owner. Is there any issues or, I mean, what's, do we have any knowledge about how that works or is that our issue?
I don't believe that it's an issue. I believe they've been in discussion with the agent who's selling the property, and they do have the authorization to present this request to the board.
Have we seen that?
I do not have that in your package, no.
I mean, because my understanding is there has to be some sort of relationship or proof that the person presenting something for the development has something from the owner that says they have the right to present something for the owner. And I didn't know if we've seen that.
It wasn't included in your package. It's my understanding that we do, but I can let Mr. Williams address that.
Okay.
Hey, good morning. My name is Paul Williams. I'm with Jim Cap Development. Address is 210 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And yes, yes, Sir Commissioner Fuller, we, we do have the property under contract. In fact, we're scheduled to close next week. Part of the application process, we submitted to the town, the owners of the, the foundation that you mentioned, they had to sign off. So, we had their attorney sign off on behalf of us that the application that we were submitting was acceptable and consistent with our agreement to acquire the property.
I'm just saying, we haven't seen it, so I didn't know if it existed.
I don't have a copy. I know it was submitted with our, with our application.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for the engineer. No, our engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's like the Kahoon Kahoon. You have to say which engineer you're.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, David.
Good morning.
On item three of your engineer review comments, it talks about the driveway entrance/exit. The primary poach needs to come from 158 because of the weight load. 158 is constructed to meet heavier weights, but it shows the exit coming out on Grouse Street, which in your memo says is not weighted to carry heavy loads. Is that going to be a problem?
And we talked pretty extensively about this, about the vehicle pathing for the large vehicles through the site. And our ordinance refers to the primary means of access for tractor-trailer traffic must be through 158. And so, originally, it came through Grouse Street, and the applicant was able to go ahead and revise the configuration for that truck traffic to be primarily routed through the 158 access.
And then, coming out on Grouse.
And coming out on Grouse. We've asked them to go ahead and minimize that traffic as much, much as they can, noting the fact that that pavement section typically is not weighted or designed to accommodate the weight of that type of vehicle traffic.
Then my next question is, are we going to have an issue with Grouse Street sooner rather than later because of weight distribution?
I, I think that there is going to be some type of vehicular movements into Grouse Street in order to be able to back into the loading zone. But there may be some opportunities for them to be able to depart from the site onto 158 as well. So, we've asked them to go ahead and minimize that traffic circulation pattern onto Grouse But could there be the potential? Yes, there could be.
Okay. Because my question really was, are we going to have to do something with Grouse Street because of potential weight limits?
We, and I think that's just kind of a wait-and-see. We do have tractor-trailer access on some of our other collector streets. We have not had a problem. But again, I think that's a wait-and-see to see the frequency of traffic, the, the type of traffic loading in that area before we can really make a determination on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, can you confirm that the stormwater plan they have for the east side of their property is sufficient compared to the ditch that's currently there to keep any runoff from the residential homeowners on the other side of that?
Okay. So, what Commissioner Sears is referring to is there's an existing drainage way right through here. And we've been working back and forth with the engineer on this ditch is proposed to be replaced with a pipe. There had been supporting calculations as to a partial solid-wall pipe and perforated pipe along this length. Originally, it was proposed as 18 inches in diameter. We have subsequently worked with the design engineer on that and asked them to provide a 24-inch diameter pipe along this length. We feel that based upon the calculations provided, the downstream conditions, that that 24-inch diameter pipe is adequate to be able to convey upstream flow and connectivity for downstream flow through the event site and out through the sound outfall.
And the current, this building and structure and the elevation they have to raise to meet their 10-foot elevation is not going to increase that load on that? on that pipe that when it drains out?
The, the application is required to provide onsite stormwater management to meet the commercial standard. So there is some overflow mechanisms beyond that 4.3-inch rainfall event that they have through some emergency spillways out into the right-of-way, which that is permissible. But what they are required to provide, they have demonstrated that they can meet the commercial standard as per our ordinance. Yes, ma'am.
Follow-up based on that, the emergency spillways that go out into the right-of-way, does that include Grouse Street?
There is, with this proposal, there is a modification to the existing storm drain network, which runs along this line right here, that when it spills over into the Grouse Street right-of-way, that there would be a connection to this installed drop inlet, which we'd be able to go ahead and convey, convey flow downstream. So they've had, they've made provisions for that spillway for direct connection to that storm system.
I saw that. I was just making sure, because Grouse Street, the elevation drops from west to east. So anything hitting that street is going to automatically head towards Highway 12. So I just want to make sure that we're not adding to the west-to-east drainage area.
The, the grading provisions for these emergency spillways are directly tied into these new structures. So there's a direct path there.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have a follow-up question on the, the access on 158. Did you say that was going to be a ride-in, ride-out only? Or is that a future discussion with DOT?
This is currently proposed as a ride-in, ride-out only. There, when we initially discussed this application with the applicant, we had concerns with the proximity, not only to Grouse Street, but also this driveway connection to the north. So they have basically centered this between those two existing points of driveway access onto 158. The town standard is to have a minimum of 30-foot horizontal distance from this point to the right-of-way intersection. They are currently at about 90 feet, so they exceed the town standards. The second part of the review would be through DOT for the new driveway connection. And DOT has some horizontal distances. They're measured a little bit differently. They are measured from the point of tangency right here for the new driveway connection to the existing point of tangency on this radius coming out from Grouse Street. The minimum requirement is 50 feet, with 100 feet being desirable. They exceed the 50-foot requirement. But, and this was not noted in the comments, but if the board would like to go ahead and make a recommendation, that approval is conditional upon DOT approval for this driveway connection to 158.
And a follow-up question to that, the tractor-trailers are going to enter from 158?
That is correct.
So are we assuming they're all coming from the west or?
Not from the north.
I mean.
South.
Yeah, well, if south or if west. Anyway, but, I mean, from the south there, but, you know, from the Raleigh area or whatever. Are they coming from tidewater? Are they coming this way? Because they can't make a left into the parking lot if they're coming from the north.
There, there is a pork chop island that we've had on many other applications where this is mountable. So if they are coming from a, from the north, that they should be able to go ahead and make this turn in here with the tractor-trailer, which may require them to mount that curb, but still have access here into the site. And they've shown a pathing exhibit, which shows the approach from the south and being able to make this turn into the site with the type of tractor-trailer access that they have noted for this application.
It's really a right turnout. I mean, people will turn in the, to the left, I mean, if they're coming from the north. So it's really a right turnout condition.
Yes, my apologies. It's a right turnout. It's full movement in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's how it's presented?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan as presented, including the modified landscape slash buffer change.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I ask the motioner a question?
Please.
Did you include, did you mean to include the statement that the town engineer made about subject to approval from DOT?
I intentionally left that out mainly because that's up to DOT. It's not up to us. So, I mean, I, if, if you want it in there, I'll be happy to put it in there. But I did not put it in the motion.
But if they don't approve it, they can't curb cut it. Thank you.
Okay. So are we going with the motion unamended? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Great, thank you very much. The next item is a consideration of a site plan for Doughty Park Phase Two improvements.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The town is presenting this application for the Doughty Park Phase Two and Phase Three. Even though we are in the process of trying to construct Phase Two, we have designed everything that we anticipate doing here at the site and asking that you approve this so that we don't have to bring any future phase back for additional review. As you know, we are working on putting together the bid package for this and the plans and specifications, which should go out to bid in the next month. We're, we're going to be trying to determine cost estimates for everything so we can put those bids together. But everything that we anticipate doing in the future is being presented to you on the site plan at this time, even though not all of it will be constructed in the next phase. A lot of the development required, the requirements for development were completed during the Phase One development of Doughty Park. Much of the required landscaping, and a lot of the site has additional landscaping that's not required, but landscaping, parking, lighting, traffic circulation, stormwater management, waste and recycling collection. A lot of these requirements were met during Phase One, and no additional requirements for those things are being required in Phase Two with what's being proposed. As you can see on the site plan, much of what is being proposed is located along this eastern edge of the site. We have an entrance area over here, a gateway, much as we had over in Phase One on the northwest corner of the site. This area is intended to be fairly heavily landscaped and is intended to be a pollinator garden. Beyond that, we have bocce court area, passive recreation area. We have a basketball court here. Off to the side of that, there's a pickleball court. There's a bounce wall. The basketball court itself is being striped for Futsal as well. There's a sensory garden in this location. We're proposing restrooms in this location. Being closest to the playground is where we see much of the daily use for the site. And then the multipurpose recreation field would be here. And there'd be additional pathways along the outer perimeter of the site. And then obviously, pathways all throughout this new area. The, the building, the restroom building, is being designed to serve, obviously, there's a men's and women's and a family restroom. There is also a covered seating area. We are proposing to put in a 930-gallon LPP wastewater system to serve the restroom. The drain field for that would also be right in this area. The building will meet the proposed flood elevation of 10 feet. It would be slightly higher than that. We're, with lot coverage, we're going to be just under 30% for the site, which is well below the standard we're required to meet. David Ryan has designed the stormwater for this site to accommodate approximately a 5.2-inch rainfall event. This site falls under redevelopment exclusion with the state, so we're mainly just meeting our own requirements for this. And the state requirements allow us to do this under the redevelopment exclusion. This, this phase, we're not proposing any additional lighting. We do have parking lot lights. As you know, we are proposing to come back and do some Ballard-style pathway lighting along the pathways in the park. That would probably be solar lighting. That was proposed for Phase Three. We're not looking at putting any additional signage in the park at this time. The, the site plan itself, we believe, meets all the requirements of the town code. The planning board reviewed this and recommended unanimously approval of this at their March meeting. And so we're presenting this for your review and approval. Would like to thank David Ryan for all the hard work he's putting into designing this, as well as CLH and Beacon Architecture for their design of the restroom building. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do board members have any questions, comments? Yes.
Maybe this is a question about being a victim of our own success. But we're, we're adding, and I assume this is being presented with sufficient parking. But I guess the question surrounds one of, if you went to the Easter egg hunt, there wasn't anywhere near enough parking. Half the school lot was full, half the Y lot was full of people going to this event, not parking at school or Y for anything. And then there was parking all down the road. And I guess one of my questions is, on an event like that, do we fill out a crowd gathering permit? Or do we go through the same process we make other people go through for special events? And if so, do we have a process of how we handle traffic? Where we're gonna, where we know we're going to exceed our parking?
Yeah, for, for special, for special events, we do do a crowd gathering application. And typically, we coordinate with the school and the YMCA to make sure it's happening when they're not using their facilities and getting their permission. And then we'll usually have our police department assisting with movement of vehicles. For instance, Art Rage just last year, which was a joint event between the town and the Arts Council, we did the whole crowd gathering permit application and had received approval to use the adjacent facilities for parking. And so that, obviously, that's the way this is intended to be designed for something like that. We would never be able to design enough parking for those types of things. So the parking here is really for just the daily use and doesn't really anticipate the special events, which we know are going to be a big part of how this is used.
I just kind of want to make sure that when we did special events, we went through the same thing we ask other people to do.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any, any other, yes, Mike?
Yeah, with that being said, and commenting the fact that you're not planning for those larger events in this situation, and you're basing your location of your restrooms on current activity, not future growth activity, is there any way we can add to this plan a possibility for a eastern side restroom that may not be of the same capacity? But for, we got multi-generations out there, and not everybody can go 300 yards across in a timely manner to make where they need to make it. And if we're going to make this park truly accessible to all generations of this community, we have to look at that not only for today or how it's been used the last year, but how it's being, going to, going to be used in the future.
Yes, and, and I, you know, at this point in time, as, as you know, we have not accommodated a restroom on the eastern side. And I think, you know, we're, we're just looking to see how it's used and what the need's going to be. The, the, a future restroom is not included on the Phase One or Phase, I mean, Phase Two or Phase Three design. But if we decide at some point that we need to add something like that, we would have to plan for and budget for that. And the restroom is, in this phase, is going to be the most expensive thing we do, you know. So we, I mean, your comment is, is well noted. And I think we'll just have to, to kind of see how it's used and go from there.
You're asking for this to be approved with everything you currently intend to do. And without some verbiage in it that states that we can do this, I don't, I don't want to move forward with, out some verbiage that states we may have to add that in at a later time. Because with all the activities you have planned for the eastern side of this, I think you're going to see an increase in traffic. And maybe, I'm sure Mr. Ryan has checked it out, but maybe the, the facilities aren't capable of handling that much traffic.
Well, and, you know, the architect has obviously looked at the design and the, the standards that are in the building code for restrooms. And we believe that the restroom that's being proposed meets that standard. But I think what we're talking about here is something that's providing a level of service for the people using the park and not necessarily just to meet a code requirement. And so, you know, if we wanted to add something into the approval that we would want to come back at some point in time and reevaluate the need for additional restrooms, we, we could, we could do that certainly. And for the special events, I think we're always going to plan on keeping portageons distributed around the site so there's additional restrooms to handle that level of activity. I mean, I, you know, with, with a large event, there's almost no way to get around having those additional portageons.
So if, go ahead, David.
I would just like to go ahead and add to that. With the existing facilities over here on the west side, the wastewater system has been overdesigned to accommodate those larger events. Where we're required to only have 400 gallons a day, we're almost upwards of 1,000 gallons a day. So we've tried to take into account with the design of these facilities right here, not only current needs, but also future needs. But also, over here on the west side, we do have a, in the future programming, a public work shed. We do have some green spaces around this area that aren't being filled out at this particular time, which could provide some opportunities for future location for restrooms in these areas, not only for the actual structure itself, but also for wastewater disposal. So I, I think that we have given ourselves the flexibility to be able to adapt, make adjustments on the fly in the future to meet future needs.
For the record, I concur with Commissioner Sears.
Yeah, well, I, I think I do too. Would it be, while David's at the podium, since we have more capacity in the drain field at the restrooms we will, we'll be building at this point, and possibly could expand or upgrade that system, would it be advisable to put a conduit in place under the new improvements, possibly for a force main in the future to connect the, the new building to a system? Or would it be more efficient at that point to build another drain field?
I, I think it would be more efficient, just based upon the distance from here to here or anywhere over here on the east side. We would look at a separate drain field itself. So that's something that we can plan for with conduits, similar to what we had done in the first phase to accommodate not only the existing uses for that initial program, but also future uses. So we've got a wealth of conduits that run underneath the sidewalks that can accommodate many different locations for those facilities.
Okay, great.
Could you put the drain field under the pollinator area?
I would have to look into that more. I, I guess what we would be concerned about is potential root intrusion for that active septic field. But again, we, I think we've got some green spaces over here that are currently not being built out that we could use for active drain field. So we've got two or three that we could utilize for that use.
I mean, they fit fine. A drain field would fit in those green space area.
Yeah.
I, I think that we could, it's probably going to be smaller in scale than what we currently have programmed over on the west side, though.
While the park is very new and we're working on the next phases, I think there are opportunities in the future, as David has stated. But if you compare this to something like the event site, the soundside event site, which is, is much larger, and there are no restrooms. There are some proposed, but they are on the, the northeasternmost corner. It's a larger site. There aren't additional restrooms proposed somewhere else on the site. And there, those events are likely to be much larger. And this site is accessible to all. All of the sidewalks and the pathways and everything have been built accessible to all. So, I mean, while you want to have access, sometimes there is a, I won't say cost-benefit ratio, sometimes there's things you can afford to do and things you can't. You know, a Walmart is a pretty big place, too. You still have to walk all the way across the store to go to the restroom. So, as long as there's an opportunity for the future, I don't personally feel that there's a need to plan for that at this moment in time, as long as staff feels like there's opportunity in the future, should the needs grow.
As long as we protect that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, any further questions?
One final point that I wanted to add, which the conversation initially started, was parking situation. And I think, when we look at parking, similar to Art Rageous, we're located next to the elementary school. So, for larger events, especially on weekends, having the potential use of those facilities. Also, with the Bonnet Street bath house being close proximity and a number of parking spaces there, we could also use that use, too, for overflow parking for future events. And we have also talked about the potential for on-street parking on the north side of Bonnet Street in the future. So, these are things that we've been monitoring and looking at and considering. So, I think with the initial plan and what we're talking about with Phases Two and Three, we're keeping all these things that we see in the ground in mind for possible adaptive management in the future.
Yes.
Do we need a MOU with the school system about the parking? Instead of it being so loose, do we need a MOU about it?
If we go through the special use permit process, we've got to have that on a case-by-case basis from the school and the Y anyway. But it would be good to have, I think, just a longstanding agreement.
I can work on getting that.
And I have one more. As we go out here and look at this site, here's my editorial comment. I hope we don't add any more little rocks like we have already got out there. And I hope that we are planning to remove all those little rocks that are projectiles from the site.
We are. That was incorporated in at the last second for Phase One. We were running short on money. We had some erosion control issues. We are planning on going ahead and addressing that within the next month or so, to remove those rocks, again, knowing that that has evolved into a problem.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna be a maintenance problem for buildings and grounds if they have to comb the property for all those little rocks before they mow.
Our plan is to remove those rocks here in a short time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sears, do you wanna frame a motion on this?
It's tricky. I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay. I have a motion to approve and a second, as presented. Any further discussion?
I would like to just make sure that there's a note in the minutes that we recognize as a board sitting today, that we expect to maintain an area for future use for a rest facility on the eastern side. Not part of the motion, but just as a note in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that's what we heard from the board. Thank you very much. In that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much. I wanna say a couple of things about this. One is, I appreciate the foresight of previous boards for what they did for Dowdy Park. I don't think, even as a member of the steering committee, in my wildest imagination, I envisioned that park being as full of people on a daily basis, as it has turned out to be, which is pretty great. The other thing is that, one of the, one of the small children in the group at the Easter egg hunt came after the, after all the activity was over, and came out, followed by his mom, and all he had done was to collect mulch, and was very happy with his basket of mulch. He walked right past all the eggs, but he was gathering up the mulch. It wasn't the rocks, but it was the mulch. Great, thank you very much. The next item is old business, table from the previous meeting, the Town Hall Generator. Cliff?
Yes, sir. We've got, presented for your information, is some additional information that the board requested from your last meeting. These directions that I had given staff was that, due to the importance of the generator and the concern about the, that we didn't have much left from this generator, and that it served us well, but with hurricane season coming up, that we needed to get a generator in place as quickly as we could. So, in that haste, we may have over underestimated the board's desire for more information on natural gas. We've, by going back and getting the bids that we've gotten, we've done that now and looked at the natural gas. Well, the natural gas is obviously more cleaner, the staff's recommendation's gonna stay with the diesel because of its reliability, because of it, because the generator doesn't operate, hopefully, doesn't operate very much at all. And in the last few years, it, we turn it on every week to make, you need to run it and maintain it, to make sure it can carry the load. But the natural gas is, we just feel it's more reliable, the cost difference is not as negligible, due to the amount of time that this generator runs. If it ran continuously, or if it was servicing the building, then I think we would probably lean more towards the natural gas. But we're gonna, you know, we'll do either one, we can do either one, you've got the cost for both. But again, I think our recommendation would be that we go with the diesel because of its reliability, and it's easier to maintain, it's an easier fix, the plug and go, and the, some of the bidders that we have spoken with would concur with that. But we, like I said, it's a board decision, and we'll, we can make either one of these two work.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Yes, Renee?
You referenced biodiesel, is it available?
Is biodiesel available locally?
Not that I know of, no matter.
It was referenced in the memo, that's why I asked.
I think that we could probably get it, if we wanted it, for a single tank.
Yeah, I don't know anywhere here that sells it. I'm sure we can get it from somewhere.
Okay.
But I don't know anywhere even remotely close that carries biodiesel.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I'll say, as somebody who grew up driving diesel tractors, they're pretty hard to break. It is, it is a very reliable engine, and I do understand the concern about having control of that fuel source when we need it. So, a motion would be in order. Yes.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much. And thank you for the additional research. New business, committee reports. Are there any commissioners who have a committee report?
One comment. The Coastal Resources Commission will be meeting here next week. There will be a public comment period, so if anybody wanted to make public comment about any issues germane to the town, that would be the time to do so.
Thank you. I'm sorry, when is that meeting again?
The meeting is, starts at 3:15 on Tuesday, the 10th, I believe. And public comment will be on Wednesday, the 11th.
Okay.
The meeting is actually at the Dare County Administrative Building.
If, I mean, we reached out to Frank Jennings about the, the board discussed encouraging the use of hatteras ramps for walkovers, beach accesses, and also that we continue to ask that CAMA grants be allowed for renovation or, you know, remodeled, not just for new. So, we're planning on making those comments at the CRC in that regard.
And is administrative approval of outfall extensions, is that part of this?
Would be a welcome comment as well.
Great, thank you.
For a public comment. I was gonna bring that up about outfalls. Typically, the meetings have been in the Dare County Board Room. I believe the meeting is actually gonna be in the room that you first go into, the main building to the left, into that meeting space, is my understanding, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great. Thank you for that heads up on that. There are some issues there that we need to bring up to be there to address. So, thank you.
Typically noon, I believe, on.
For comment?
For comment.
Okay, so that would be noon on the Wednesday. Great, okay. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are appointments to boards committees, consideration of appointment, reappointment to the planning board. The expiring term is that of Kate Jones, and you may reappoint or nominate someone else.
I'd make a motion, we reappoint Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Yes, Webb?
May I go back to the previous item, just for one thing, real quick?
Sure.
At one point in time, the outfalls repair was considered repair and maintenance?
It still is.
And that was through a letter. With beach nourishment, is extension still considered repair and maintenance, or is that considered new construction?
New construction.
So, that would require a CAMA major?
That would require a CAMA major, and currently, right now, that would be done by variance, initiated by DOT. Since the outfalls are not owned by the town, they're owned by Department of Transportation. There has been a movement through the CRAC with the board's direction to make that by rule, so it's in the rulemaking, that's where it's gonna go.
Was there any thought given to the fact that, because the beach profile was changed, that the addition could be considered repair and maintenance?
With lots of opposition.
Okay.
So, that's why it was done by, go ahead and do it by rule, rather than making everybody go through a variance.
And that's going through the process?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, sorry.
No, 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 that's valuable discussion. Thank you.
Very good point, and very well noted.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is consideration of renewal of the Eighth Street Beach Access MOU.
Yes, sir. Every three years, this memorandum of understanding comes before the Nagshead Board and the Kill Devil Hills Board. It's, my understanding, it dates back to the mid-'90s, when the town received a CAMA grant for construction on the Eighth Street Beach Access. This beach access, as you know, the south side is on the town property, the north side is on the Kill Devil Hills side. All the improvements are on the Nagshead side. So, this MOU talks about the annual cost that the town receives from Kill Devil Hills for the routine maintenance, which is $500. And then, any major repair over $1,000, say for washout of stairs, or any damage done to the access, would require 50/50 cost split. This, staff recommends, the public works director has reviewed this, is comfortable with it. It's pretty much what it has been since this was originally contemplated back, I think, 90, either 90, I think, 93. So, staff's recommending or requesting that you approve this MOU.
Great, thank you. To get this up for discussion, a motion would be in order.
I would make a motion to renew this MOU with the town of Kill Devil Hills and Nagshead for the maintenance of Eighth Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any questions?
Eighth Street Beach Access, to clarify.
Yes, great, thank you. In that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next, items referred to and presentations from town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, the board and I had a discussion about the issues of regulation of commercial signage. I had a conversation with Mr. Fuller, who had asked about that, and staff, and we've decided to hold off on making any presentation about that at this time. So, I have nothing else other than that.
Thank you. Next, our items referred to and presentation, I'm sorry. Yes, we, I believe we are gonna take a break here, because we are about 12 minutes early getting to this point. So, let's do that. Let's take, we have a time-specific item at 11 o'clock on beach nourishment, so we will take a break for 12 minutes. Okay, we are, we are back together here, and our next item on our agenda is time-specific, and it's our 11 o'clock. And I thank those folks who waited. We were getting copies of fresh information, the slides that you'll see for board members to be able to make notes on, and took us a few minutes to get all of that ready. So, Cliff?
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Connaught, man who needs no introduction to the town. We recently opened the bids for 18 and 19, and Tim is here to explain where we are in the process.
Thank you, Cliff. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tim Connaught with Coastal Science and Engineering, project director for the Nagshead Rennourishment Project. And I'm really pleased to see all of you today and discuss the bids. Tried to answer a few questions that have come up since we received the bids. So, I think what I'll try to do is present a few slides that will help answer some of the questions, and then we'll go through the bid tabulation a little bit. But I will say that I'm very pleased that we received four bids from four companies, and there are only six dredgers that are legally able to do the kind of work that we're talking about. So, that's quite high. But I am disappointed that we couldn't get a good bid for the 2018 work. And before starting, I just wanna acknowledge that a lot of people put a lot of time into trying to make this project happen in 2018, starting with the Short Protection Committee. Barry and Jim are here, they were on the committee. We met for about six months. We've reached a consensus on what the plan should be. We had lots of input from the previous commission, Mr. Mayor. And once you make the decision to move forward with these kind of projects, a lot of things have to come into play. There are about four or five major reports that had to be prepared, an environmental assessment, a biological assessment, an essential fish habitat assessment, a cultural resources assessment, a geotechnical report. And the resource agencies were fantastic in working with our group. They have to review all these documents in a timely manner. And I have to say that, compared to where we were for the 2011 project, this one went off very quickly with respect to the reviews by the resource agencies, the regulators, Corps of Engineers, DCM. And so, I just wanna acknowledge that a lot of people put in some long hours to get this done in a timely manner. So, with that said, what I'd like to do is just discuss the conditions of the beach, where we stand right now with respect to our plan, maintenance plan, and go through some of the bid specifics, and then get back. some of the bid specifics, and then get back to a few questions. So let's see, Michelle, if we can just go up to the next one, and if I can read this from this distance. The condition of the beach as of the last survey in July of 2017, we have 64% remaining of the 2011 nourishment volume, and that breaks down by reach, as you see there. Reach one has 99%, which is considerably down from where we were just a year ago, where we had, or a year and a half ago, where we had about 125% remaining. Reach two, we have 68% remaining. Reach three, 28% remaining. Reach four, which is that last little quarter-mile transition area into the national seashore, we have 0% remaining. So the question came up, when will Nagshead reach the 50% renourishment threshold? Based on where we are as of July of 2017, we estimate that December 2019 is when we would hit the 50% mark. Now, all these estimates are based on a projection of what the average annual loss rates are. You know, as you're well aware, we have some years where we lose a lot of sand, we have some years where we actually gain some sand, but on average, we're projecting a loss of 275,000 cubic yards per year, and that's what the original design was based on and what all the maintenance plan has been based on. So that's how we see it tracking. Michelle, the next one, please. As far as the FEMA portion of the project, as you know, when Hurricane Matthew hit, we were in the process of developing the renourishment plan, the so-called town plan, without regard to what might happen in a storm. We're proceeding along, and then Hurricane Matthew occurred in the midst of all that. So what CSE did immediately was to go out and resurvey the beach within a week after the storm, and we were able to document over 1.4 million cubic yards lost from the nourishment template, the template going out to the FEMA reference depth minus 19 feet. So that 1.43 million cubic yards was a significant volume compared to the 4.6 that we put on, and FEMA accepted that survey, and that survey allowed us to move forward with an application for restoration of the 1.4 million cubic yard loss under FEMA's Category G Community Assistance Grants. Other communities have used these grants in recent years. We've had experience with this going all the way back to the 80s in the city of Myrtle Beach, and this program has been set up by FEMA with the idea of encouraging communities that do locally funded projects to maintain their project. So it's a program that's been in place for a long time, but the rules of securing those funds kind of change, they get revised from time to time, and I myself am not expert in what the FEMA requirements are for these types of things. So very much when we work with a town like Nagshead, or any of the other communities in Carteret County, which we've done, the application process, CSE's role is to provide the documents that their, the FEMA engineers can review and determine whether or not we've provided sufficient evidence that there were indeed the losses we are reporting out. So that was our contribution for it. The application process requires very heavy involvement with the town, the owner of the project, to work with the FEMA folks and make sure that all the other i's and t's are crossed and so on. So we were able to successfully secure approximately $14 million for construction of the FEMA portion of the project to add on to what the town part of the project was going to be. As you recall, after the Shore Protection Committee finished their deliberations and discussions, the town determined that a 2.3 million cubic yard project was warranted, and that's roughly the 50% of the original 4.6 million project. So the FEMA work was an add-on to the 2.3 millions, allowing us to get up to a 3.7 million cubic yard project to really get the town project fully restored. Anytime that you do a restoration, whether it's just a standalone by the town, or FEMA comes in and approves projects, you still have to go through the full CAMA process, Corps of Engineers process, to obtain permits. In our case, this is especially true because we're trying to do these projects in the summertime so that we can take advantage of good weather and have more efficiencies and so on. So that requires full Section 7 consultation, as it's called, where the Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service reviews the environmental documents and then gives you a blessing on the project, or the special conditions to allow us to build the project in the summertime. And that's usually the critical path that determines how long it takes to get the permits. So nevertheless, we were able to get permits for a maximum quantity of sand that, in this case, we rounded up to a 4 million cubic yard project as the maximum amount of work that could potentially be done under the permits, and so the permit, and the bids were structured according to that 4 million cubic yards. Michelle, if we could go forward here, just a quick summary now of the bottom line on the bids. We put the plans and specs out on the street for the dredgers to look at in February with a deadline of March 15th, and we requested two bids, one Bid A for 2018 work, the one that we really wanted, and then one for 2019 for work that would give the dredgers more time to plan and so on. We received the bids, and I consider it a successful bid because for 2018, we had two companies that were close to the same price, and in 2019, we had two companies that were close to the same price. That's the good news. The bad news is there was a huge disparity between the 2018 bid, which came in at $52 million as the low bid with Great Lakes Dredge and Dock, and the 2019 bids, which came in at $36,600,000, as you see there. The bids, as they came in, covered a total of 4 million cubic yards, because that was the maximum shown on the bid tabulation form. If we back off to a quantity of 3.73 million cubic yards, which would be the combination of the town's plan, 2.3 million, and the FEMA portion, 1.43 million, then a prorata share, the equivalent amount on that one would be about $49 million if we did it in 2018, and that unit price would be reduced by 1080 a cubic yard for those last few yards that are locked off versus 2019, which reduces to $34,700,000 if we were to do the target design plan. The budget for construction, as you see down there, and this is what we've received from guidance from the town and from the FEMA portion, totals approximately $36 million. There's a lot of details behind these numbers, which David Ryan could go through in detail if you're interested. So using that $36 million, Michelle, if we could go to the next one, please. Using that assumed $36 million, we asked what possible amount of work could we accomplish in 2018 if that was the budget? Well, based on the bids received, with Great Lakes Dredge and Dock being the lowest, their mobilization cost for 2018 was $8.5 million. By comparison, their mobilization in 2019 was $4 million. Their base unit price for 2018 was $1040 per cubic yard, and that's for the first 2 million cubic yards, the way we structured the bid, that was the so-called base quantity. So 2 million cubic yards would cost $20,800,000 under that bid item. Then we have an alternate which specified to do 570,000 additional yards, and at that price, we could purchase all 570,000 cubic yards within our budget. That would total to $6.156 million. That leaves about $544,000 left out of the $36 million budget, which, based on their final alternative bid item, which went in at $1760 per cubic yard, if my numbers are correct, that would cover an additional 46,900 cubic yards. So in total, the volume possible in 2018 under the bids that we received was approximately 2.6 million cubic yards, or around 70% of the overall plan. Does everybody follow that?
I do, except for one thing.
Yes, sir.
Which, I don't know if we're asking questions, but the base unit price of $10.40, and then the additional unit price of $10.80, why would it go up instead of down?
Part of that is because of the way they prorate the mobilization and demobilization into their bid structure. So we had certain line items that were requested. We didn't request a line item for the first base bid, we required a lump sum, and that's, so we backed out what the effective unit cost was. But why there was a slight discrepancy, we'd have to ask particular dredgers. It varies with each company usual.
Normally, if I'm correct, doesn't additional things after all that's paid for, the additional stuff goes down?
Right.
Okay.
But not all the time. And there are certain things that are, we're not privy to in the way they structure their bids. Sometimes it has to do with the timing of the equipment, or if they get a certain quantity, they know they can do within a certain timeframe, but if you increase the quantity, that might affect their equipment disposition. So there are a lot of factors that go into these things. Okay, let's go to the next one. This may be difficult for y'all to see in the back, but if you have the handouts in front of you, I just wanted to show you some historical data, recent historical data on bids that have been received for OBX nourishment projects. 2011 was the premier beach nourishment project up in these parts, using an offshore borrow area, and we were able to get an incredible price for the 2011 Nagshead project, $6.70 per cubic yard. In fact, when we got that price, we were amazed at what a good deal for the town this was, and I think I probably said to the council at the time, enjoy this price because we may never see prices like this again, and that's been borne out with the results afterwards. Duck, Kill Devil Hills, and Kitty Hawk, of course, went out for bid. Their first bid came in way over, so they actually rebid their project about a month later, and you can see in bold there in yellow, the winning unit price was $1020 per cubic yard, and that was for following season construction. They had to also postpone the start of their project. Great Lakes was the low bidder on that one, and it was comparable in size to the 2011 Nagshead project. So you can see already, that's a good 70% higher unit cost than what we had here in 2011. Buxton went out for bid in 2016 for 2016 work, or 2017 work, bidding it both ways, and the difference in bids was, as you see in the bottom there, not in color, it's the difference between 2016 and 2017 was $11 million and change. So the 2017 construction cost, that bid was $8.52, so considerably over the 2011 project, but considerably under what Duck and KDH had. Now, before we went into our bid on March 15th, which is summarized there on the right, what happened in the meantime? Well, Duck and Kill Devil Hills were completed successfully, so the dredgers now had two projects under their belts in this part of the world to go by. Meanwhile, Buxton had started construction last year around the end of June, and they put a Cutterhead dredge down there in Buxton. You know how difficult it is just to get down there, let alone to do all the logistics, and they missed a window. They were over a month late starting because their dredges were committed, they were tied up in New Jersey or elsewhere on other projects, so they lost a key window, and then they had some mechanical problems, and Weeks Marine, which did the Buxton project, basically lost three months of time to weather, to mechanical issues. The Cutterhead dredge was not working as efficiently as they could, and the upshot of all this is it took them until the end of February, just a month ago, to finish that project. They did finish it successfully, and they did it within the budget that Dare County had established for them. In fact, they were right on the budget, but it took them eight months with three different dredges operating, and so that experience really didn't help create an atmosphere of encouragement for any future bids around here. So again, I'm very thankful that Great Lakes came in with a bid for 2019 that was within the budget that's been established, and allowing us to do essentially the full scope of work that's permitted, very close to it. The 2018 budget is... The 2018 budget is almost sixteen million dollars higher than the 2019 budget on the bid. On a proportional scale, it's just like Buxton, twenty sixteen versus twenty seventeen, ten and eleven million dollar difference. We're seeing, for this part of the country, and some other places, we've seen this up in New York, too, more and more projects are going out bidding for when the owner wants to do it, as well as bidding for further down the road period of time. And that's, I think, mainly because so many of the dredges are tied up right now, doing a lot of work. We have post-sandy work that's still going on in the New Jersey, New York area. When the Deepwater Horizon occurred, that event, which was well over five years ago, that generated a huge amount of beach work down in Louisiana. And then on top of that, you have port deepenings, such as Charleston, Savannah. This is tying up lots of dredges. So we're trying to keep up with that market as best we can, respecting the proprietary nature of any kind of, you know, efforts by the dredging companies to sort of ascertain where the other companies are, because there's just so few companies that we're dealing And before we leave this particular table, I want you to take a look at the bottom line right there. Just before coming out here, we received a bid summary from the Myrtle Beach Nourishment Project that went out for bids, was received on the twenty-ninth of March, so just a week ago, and one bidder...
Sorry. He's trying to reduce the noise.
There was one bidder for that job. It was one point four million cubic yard project in Myrtle Beach, one of the federal renourishments. And when you see what the bid was, thirty-four million dollars for one point four million yards, it works out to twenty-four dollars per cubic yard. So I think we're, we came out pretty good in terms of the bids. Even the twenty-eighteen price, unit price was thirteen dollars a cubic yard versus the nine dollars a cubic yard. So that's all the slides I had, if you want to flip to the questions. So I thought what I would do before, maybe to help, before we get into some of your questions, why is there such a disparity in the bids? I think the main reason is that the dredgers have so much equipment tied up right now that it's like, with them, it's like a chess game. We're trying to figure out, okay, we've got five bids that are due. If we get this one, what's going to happen to these other four bids? And these are coming in in pretty quick succession for just a handful of companies that are going to have viable bids for this. So we've heard in recent, well, for the last six months, virtually all the hopper dredges are committed for nearly a year, as of six months ago. We knew this, we knew hopper dredges were going to be an issue. Cutter head dredges, on the other hand, are more available right now. So this is one reason we've tried to structure your project from day one, from back in the, you know, before twenty-eleven, tried to structure it where either type of dredge can be used. Because if you can get a cutter head in there, they can just pump and pump and pump, and as long as the weather conditions are okay, you can get a lot of work done, as we saw in the summer of twenty-eleven. We had a cutter head, it did about one-third of the project. But we also saw that the hopper dredges worked much more efficiently in the wave climate that we have here. And we talked to Great Lakes after we received the bids, and they indicated that they were only going to use hopper dredges on your projects. They weren't going to bring in a cutter head. And that kind of surprised us, because they had been telling us all along, we've got hopper capacity, and, you know, we're looking for projects that we can use the cutter heads But in our conversations with Great Lakes after the bid, they said, they took a look at it, and they decided that the risk was too great to bring the cutter head down, especially with issues of Oregon inlet, just getting in and out of the inlet, with your bull gang that has to put the sub-line out and demobilize. They were really concerned about the time that it would take them to demobilize and to just be working in and out of Oregon inlet with the bad conditions. They just determine, and then also, they have to tow a cutter head dredge up to Norfolk at two or three knots, which basically is a long run to escape to safe harbor. Whereas with the hopper dredges, the hoppers can motor up there at ten knots or greater, so they can escape on short notice. There's also less pipeline that has to be put out with a hopper dredge operation. So there, these were factors that when we, or anybody has conversations with dredging companies before you go to bid, they all know each other, and they're not going to divulge what they're, they're not going to play all their, you know, show all their cards, as it were. So again, that caught us by surprise, not having a cutter head in the mix. And I think that very much affected our assumptions about whether or not we could get the 2018 price reasonable. All the hopper dredges have been tied up, and when they saw what happened down in Buxton, the time that was lost, and the fact that two dredges were tied up for eight months down there, nearly, they decided the risk was not justified. So that's my sentiment of why there was such a disparity in bids. I don't think it's the, I think it's consistent with what the other OBX bids have seen. I think the question came up, would it have made a difference if we'd gone out to bid a month or two months earlier? And I think the short answer is no. If we'd gone out to bid six months earlier, possible, but the one or two months difference wouldn't have made, it wouldn't have made any difference. I've already talked about how we've tracked dredge availability, but the one thing that, it would be a big effort to keep tabs on all the equipment that is out there. The dredgers have estimating departments, like Great Lakes Dredge and Dock Company will have an estimated department that knows what Weeks dredges are committed to. That's a, that's a big effort, but we tried to get this kind of information one time, and it's almost impossible to get it, because it's proprietary information. It's information that they want to keep to themselves, because they don't want to be at a competitive disadvantage. And for example, if they know that only two companies are going to bid on a project, which often is the case, Weeks or Great Lakes Dredge and Dock, they don't want people to know which dredges are committed to which jobs, and it's constantly in flux. So I'm personally opposed to trying to wrest that information out of them. I think it would build a level of distrust between our company and the dredgers. I think our success is reflected in the prices, the unit prices, that we've been able to get for our projects, which are really close to what we've estimated early in the process for all these jobs. And that, to me, is the best measure of success. We are not recommending a rebid at this time, especially in light of what we just saw with the Myrtle Beach experience. I think a rebid would not give us any advantages, and it would probably have more disadvantages to us at this time. I believe the bids were fair and square. That's my opinion, and you all may, are certainly welcome to make that decision. It's not ours to make. And I think, just as a final note, Nags Head Beach is in pretty good shape still, okay? There are places, there's no question, we have hotspots, there's no question, we have vulnerable areas. So we need to weigh the risk of waiting a year versus doing something at a smaller scale this year. I personally like the idea of being able to place more sand on the beach next year, significantly more sand, to extend out the time before we have to do a repeat project, another renourishment. That's our opinion, and of course, it's your decision to make whether you want to go with 2018, and what I've tried to present is how much work we could do with the budget, with the bids that we received in 2018 versus waiting until 2019. I think the risk of waiting for 2019 is relatively low compared to the advantage of waiting till 2019 and placing significantly much more sand on the beach. So that's my final word on that, and I'm welcome to hear any of your thoughts and questions.
I know that many of you have questions, and I'm not going to attempt to moderate in the way that I usually do, so just don't, just don't step on each other, and go ahead. And I think Webb did have his hand up, so go ahead.
No, I'm, I guess, I've got a number of things, some don't involve Tim, some just involve us, but in some, but my first question is, we got, you said sixty-two percent remains in total?
Sixty-four percent.
In the sandbox?
Yes.
I'm coming into this fairly new. I mean, I was back when, before everything happened, but working on, but did the town set some sort of value, a goal, about fifty percent? And can you explain that fifty percent?
Fifty percent is our monitoring and maintenance plan, and it's, it's in place to provide a trigger or a threshold for action. And of course, because of the lag time between getting, applying for a permit and getting a permit, we applied for the permits in anticipation of reaching that fifty percent threshold by 2018, and that was the whole rationale for the Shoreline Committee. And then Matthew came on top of this and speeded up things, okay? Fortunately, we weren't, before Matthew came, we weren't really that close to the fifty percent threshold, except in some small reaches. So it was the determination of the board at the time to appoint a Shoreline Committee, and the Shoreline Committee reviewed all the results and the maintenance plan, and determined that 2018 should be our target date. So that was initiated, and Matthew happened on top of that, brought us very close to that fifty percent mark all of a sudden. So as far as what it jeopardizes in other respects, maybe David?
Well, I can just, with you first. The real question is, which is the trigger? Is the trigger 2018, or is the trigger fifty percent?
Yeah, that's my question.
It's fifty percent.
Okay. So the date was more or less speculative, the fifty percent was what we were operating from?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I can speak a little to that. The fifty percent is probably, that's one thing we're going to have to look at and adjust moving forward. One thing we learned pretty apparently, when you look at this based on the reaches, fifty percent of the hole is not the right number, when you lose all of the sand in one reach, that you're having to wait for the other two or three reaches to lose a significant amount of sand before that third and fourth reach gets nourished. But the other, the other thing was, we wanted to have the permit when we reached the six years or fifty percent, whichever came last, and we wanted to be in a position to have the permit. Even if we didn't need it, we'd still be able to nourish. Instead of starting this process too late, we initiated it. So we'd have the permit now, even if we didn't have the fifty percent. That begs the question, though, are you going to nourish? Nothing says you, the policy says you, for FEMA purposes, if you remain eligible, we have to nourish if we get below fifty percent. Nothing says you can't nourish before that, it's just not in accordance with the letter of the policy law.
Can I make one clarification? The board, previous board, at one point was pushing for 2019, not 2018, and it was a very late discussion in the year to have it 2018, not at the beginning, because if I remember correctly, the representative was pushing for 2019, another one was pushing for 2019, and after a thorough discussion, members of the board consensus was to go for 2018. It was never originally planned way in advance for 2018, it was 2019. And so I just wanted to make that point of clarification, that was not the original date, it was 2019. And it was very late in the year of 2017 that that consensus was reached to go for 2018.
And it was fifty percent?
It was fifty percent.
And that's...
And it was based some of it on Matthew as well, knowing that, but I'll make that point, and then I'll ask my other questions.
But I think we know, I mean, and I take a little bit different to your point of view, we knew that the northern part was going to retain more sand than the southern part, and we knew when we came up with that fifty percent value, that the northern part was going to be on the plus side, and the southern part was going to be on the low side. So I mean, I kind of feel like the fifty percent recognizes that we knew we might be at zero in the southern part, personally. I mean, at least, we always knew that was where, if you look at the cama erosion rates, that's where the sand goes from, it leaves from that area. If you take the cama erosion rates and multiply it times the year, you can assume that we would lose all that sand.
You're right, the erosion rate is significantly higher in the southern end, but I don't recall any ever contemplating that we'd be at zero well in advance of fifty percent of the hole.
But if you take a cama erosion rate and multiply it times the year, you can figure it out mathematically how much we would be, where we would be. And I'm just saying that, and then you had to, I wasn't part of that decision process, only two people sitting here were, but it makes sense to me if you chose fifty percent. You knew some was going to be above fifty, and some was going to be below fifty, and you knew southern part of the beach was going to be way low, when you made the decision.
And it was discussed about drifting southward, that the north would drift down and help re-nourish the south, which obviously did not occur, and the taper in the south did not help the situation in any way.
That's right. I just wanted to expand on what the...
I just wanted to expand on what the town manager had indicated for the beach maintenance and monitoring plan. That was developed very rapidly nearing the completion of the original project. And that was to go ahead and meet some of FEMA's criteria to qualify for an engineered beach. So, that we had to have a plan in place, we had to define what we were going to do annually. Within that plan stated that we were going to perform annual surveys as well as develop a set of criteria and a threshold on when we were going to go ahead and re-nourish. So, that was implemented very rapidly. And yes, it may not have considered the various reaches of the beach, looked at it as a whole, but first and foremost, I think that plan was created to meet FEMA criteria. So, if, in the case of an event, that we would qualify for FEMA funding and we have submitted that to FEMA as part of the work along the way in order to meet all the individual set of criteria as they have set forth.
Commissioner Walters, go ahead.
Well, can you stay there for a second? Questions regarding FEMA, because, you know, that's a significant portion of our plan. And if we don't get, receive the FEMA funding, I mean, it's a complete, you know, redo, we're going to have less sand because we have less money. So, can you explain where we are in the FEMA process?
Yes.
Just everyone out here.
Okay. So, it has been a very complex and drawn-out process. We started this back in October of 2016, shortly after Hurricane Matthew, meeting with Army Corps of Engineers representatives, North Carolina Emergency Management representatives, and had subsequent meetings with various individuals and as a large group. From that, they had given us a couple paths in moving forward. The path that we had chosen was under the Public Assistance Alternative Procedures approach. And basically, what that permitted us to do was combine the town's scheduled re-nourishment project along with the FEMA restoration project as a single project. From that, there would be some efficiencies and economies that would be created from taking that approach and it could happen within a single calendar year. So, with that, the town had executed a project worksheet last May, which defined the scope of work, what the town's half was going to be and what FEMA's half was going to be. And FEMA had, and the town had agreed upon a fixed sum amount of sixteen point two million dollars to go ahead and complete that one point four three million cubic yards of beach fill placement to replace what was lost during Matthew, as well as some design and administrative costs. From that point, there was a lot of stops and starts. Based upon the information that we had received from FEMA, we were given some contradicting directions. But basically, that process has been on hold for the past seven or eight months until we had secured all the state and federal permits. We had secured the state permits back in February and just last week, received the federal permit for this project. As soon as we received that permit, we turned it around to FEMA so they could go ahead and commence with their part of it. Based upon the most recent information that we have received, it's going to take them about three weeks to do their internal environmental review. Once that is complete, it goes to their headquarters, as well as North Carolina Emergency Management, for a final review. Before that, it is kicked up to Washington DC, which is known as the Million Dollar Q. We anticipate that that will be kicked forward to DC somewhere end of April, beginning of May timeframe.
Do any of the permits expire? Have they got terminal dates or are they opening it on the back end?
They do have expiration dates and I may have to defer to...
Five years.
Okay.
So, we've got adequate time. And with North Carolina Emergency Management, we did have a window that we had to work within, I think it was eighteen months, with the potential for extension. And I think we've already applied for that. So, I think we're well within the permitting and grant windows.
Let's move to my other side here.
Go on, you've been focusing.
You've talked about Nagshead reaching the fifty percent in December nineteen. That's based on a July seventeen review, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not based on current conditions?
No. I don't know what current conditions are.
We will, we will do a...
We will have a survey in a couple of months.
And when?
We will have a scheduled survey in a couple of months, June.
And then how long would it take for us to get that report?
We'll have preliminary results shortly thereafter.
Please don't tell us it'd be September or November.
It'll be before hurricane season, we hope. I would say, David didn't mention this, but I think one of the difficulties that came up with respect to FEMA funding is if it's under, I think, five million dollars, that's a threshold that they have for restorations. And we had quite a few projects down in South Carolina, we'd lost a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards or two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards. And so, when you look at the cost of replacing that sand, it fell well under the five million dollar threshold. But when we went to FEMA with a request for one point four million cubic yards at nine dollars whatever per cubic yard, that got us up to this fifteen million dollar, thereabouts. And so, that put us in a different category. And so, we were all in some, we had some level of uncertainty whether or not FEMA was going to treat us the same way they were treating some other communities that had smaller losses.
And the other questions I have, one would be, if they gave you bids for two different years, are those bids good for next year? Or do you have to rebid it?
No, those are...
Those are good.
Those are...
They're hatched.
Or good until when?
They were good for ninety days in accordance with the bid documents.
Right, that's what I thought.
They have to honor the ninety days. And in conversations with the low bidder, they're willing to extend, depending on the financing, we could, they're willing to extend another fifteen days at the moment, so...
But that's forty-five day, no, excuse me, a hundred and five days. Not really good until next year.
Well, if we're under contract in a hundred and five days, then they're obligated to, at that cost in nineteen.
That would assume FEMA financing is part of that project.
Well, we can sign the contract absent the FEMA funding and go with the two point three million cubic yards.
And the other question came up this morning is if we only did two-thirds of the volume with the money that we have available.
Yes, ma'am. And what is the question?
Then what?
I think the question is, what's the viability of a two-thirds project?
Well, we know that we'd like, we'd like to have a ten-year project. That's what the 2011 was nominally centered on, twenty, hopefully ten years of relief. But we've got that southernmost section of the project that is nearly impossible to last for ten years because of the high loss rate that we have down there. So, what we're trying to do is balance this out. From my perspective, it seems like adding another million cubic yards, more than a million cubic yards, to be placed now or in 2019 far outweighs putting in just two point seven million cubic yards and knowing that the south end will be back to where it is today much quicker. By adding that extra million point four cubic yards, by doing it in 2019, we essentially buy ourselves another three, four years of erosion relief. And we also have a chance to build up our dunes to a much better protection level. We're still going to have sort of this Achilles' heel at the very south end, that last mile of shoreline that is very difficult to hold in place. But the rest of Nagshead, ninety percent of Nagshead will benefit by, and I personally don't like to do a project every five years anywhere we go. It's disruptive, as you can imagine. So, anything that we can do to extend the time out by several years, to me, is a big advantage. You get more for the buck. Nine dollars a yard sand performs just like thirteen or twenty-four dollars a yard sand. A cubic yard of sand, doesn't care how much it costs, it's going to perform the same way. So, looking out for, you know, your budget, being fiscally responsible, it's better, I think, for the town to go for the cheaper sand in the bigger quantity than to go for more frequent projects at a higher unit cost. Certainly, CSE benefits the more frequent these projects are. But I'm telling you right now, we don't want to be applying for that kind of work and doing that kind of work that's not getting extra sand on the beach. I'd much rather have another seven or eight years of life out of it. So, that's my opinion.
I, too, that, too, is the one stumbling block that we run into is, based upon our plan, what it says. It says, we've got a threshold of fifty percent that we will go ahead and replace either that or six years, whichever comes last. When we went ahead and looked at the planning for this project, we looked at a higher amount and we scaled it back to two point three million cubic yards, which represents fifty percent of what was originally placed. When we signed the project worksheet with FEMA, we agreed to do two point three million cubic yards. My fear is that if we do anything less at this point in time, we jeopardize not only current FEMA funding, but also future FEMA funding as we move forward.
Question about reaches and sand, whichever, if we do it next year or the following year, I don't care, as far as this question goes. But when we put sand on the beach, and let's just say we do a full project, how much of that sand would go in reach one and how much of that sand would go in reach four? And I'm not asking you to give me a specific, but just a value discussion here about where will that sand be placed?
We formulated it with a significant quantity to go in reach one. I think it's upwards of forty percent of the entire project in reach one.
Would go in reach one. Even though we're still at ninety-nine percent, we'd still put forty percent in reach one.
And keep in mind that the 2011 project, we put just a fraction per foot on reach one that we did on the other reaches. And that's one reason reach one gained some sand from reach two, filling, filling things in.
It's important, you know, reach one's about five miles.
Yeah. I think you got it backwards.
Reach two, three, and four are about the equivalent of reach one.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, let me, let me jump back over here, too. Renee?
I think that sounded odd. Reach two doesn't nourish reach one.
Reach two...
Reach one is to the north and it goes south, but reach two doesn't really nourish reach one.
Well, it actually does to a degree. And the reason for that, we've done analysis of all the wave records, and this was corroborated by Minerals Management Service consultants who also did wave analyses. The year 2003 to 2006, net transport was south to north. And we do have periods of time, as you know, you've lived here a long time.
During that period of time, we had a lot of hurricanes that went from south to north.
Exactly. So, and my point is that there are periods where sand is moving from south to north. And so, if you bulge up reach two in front of some of your properties, for example, and that's built in excess of where the adjacent shoreline is in either direction, sand will spread in both, both directions away from that bulge. And we created a bulge in reach two and reach three, knowing that we would get some spreading effects of the nourishment. And so, we actually saw that the first few years after. And that's, that's good news. It helped build up reach one, but then Matthew came along and took out a large percentage of what had been built up, getting us kind of back to the nourishment level as we saw on that slide. But that nourishment level, keep in mind, was much less for reach one in 2011 than it was for the adjacent reaches. So, we've tried to make adjustments for that in the 2018, 2019 project by increasing the quantities into reach one so that we have a more equitable distribution.
Mike?
Well, I have financial questions for our finance officer, so...
So, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
You know, in December, you put out that eighteen was favorable. And you quoted today that six months earlier from today, we should have put bids out if we'd have wanted better bids. And in reviewing this, since the bid came out, I went back and read everything that you've wrote, everything that you stated, and it stated that we were favorable for eighteen. And yet, today, you've still not completely disclosed what changed from December when you personally stated that it should happen in eighteen to today. And I've got, just give me a second, we give you a lot of time. We've got citizens in the audience today that if they were to switch places with you and you were living in their situation in reach one instead of central South Carolina, you're saying that we should wait till eighteen to put a hundred percent back on. And even when you put a hundred percent back on, nineteen, to put a hundred percent back on. But when you put a hundred percent back on, you're stating you're only going to put forty percent in area that currently has zero percent. So, in that situation, we're still below the fifty percent mark that we are trying to reach. And that is the most difficult area to hold it. And that's the area that's biggest concern to Nagshead. So, and everything you've said today, you haven't gave us anything bright. And you've read most of what we've, we've read. And I appreciate you doing that for the benefit of the folks that are here and watching. But where is the solution that can give us ten years? Because to the north, they haven't found that. They re-nourish in Rehoboth and they re-nourish in Ocean City almost yearly. So, how are we expected to get ten years in a more volatile area than they are in that particular area?
Well, I think we've always represented that the south end will be very difficult to hold in place. And in my mind, the only way you can do it, when you have such a big gradient between the erosion rates in north Nagshead versus erosion rates in the very south end, Nagshead, is with a terminal groin or detached breakwater offshore, to hold that section of shoreline in place. Unfortunately, we can't do that under present coastal zone management rules. So, lacking that, then we have to look at a gradient in the fill. If we simply nourish the southern mile all the time, we know that that sand is going to quickly spread. And, you know, a rule of beach nourishment is that the longevity of any project increases by the square of the length. So, if you double the length, you quadruple its life expectancy. So, that's why we try to avoid putting in a one-mile project. It's much better to have a long project. And that's why Nagshead, Carteret County beaches have lasted a long time. But your situation here is complicated by the fact that south Nagshead sand is being drawn off so quickly by the rapid erosion that we have down the national seashore. And we've tried to explain in reports why that's happening.
It was explained when they dredged before, to the extent that anytime you do something to the north, you increase the erosion rate to the south. And that was done, explained by an engineer that studied this during 2011. So, my question still remains...
I'm not sure I follow that.
If a jitty of pier or sand is added to the north of anything to the south, the erosion rates will, will speed up. And I doubt the study has been done, but if you look at the S-turns, when we beach nourished, our S-turns eroded more quicker. when we beach nourished, our S-turns eroded more quicker. We added beach sand last year to the northern beaches, and our south beach, I understand the storms, but our south has eroded quicker since that. So are we planning for a quicker erosion? And if what you just stated a minute ago, a larger project lasts longer, why didn't, why wasn't it brought to our attention that maybe we should have done our beach nourishment at the same time the northern beaches did to extend that project so it would last longer, instead of tying on at the end, creating us in a situation right now that we're unexpected for, at least when I took office in December?
I think the 2011 project had a significant gradient in the fill section. We put far more sand into Reach Three on a per-foot basis than we did in Reach One, recognizing that difference. And keep in mind that in 2005, when the planning initiated for this, there was no experience whatsoever with nourishment in Nagshead. All we had to go by were the studies that had been done by the Corps and some others. And then through the next few years, we were able to accumulate data that confirmed some of that. Whenever you place an artificial bulge out into the ocean, it's going to erode faster than the background erosion rate. It kind of stands to reason. Imagine if you just put a bulge of sand in front of your house, it's going to erode very rapidly and spread. But all the best modeling in the world can't precisely predict what those rates are. So we provide some error limits. And one of the big advantages, I want to keep reminding people of the 2011 project, is the target quantity was three point eight million cubic yards. That was what we thought we had a budget for. When the bids came in, they came in so low that we were able to ratchet up the quantity to four point six million cubic yards and still have money left over to cover all the engineering costs. So the savings in 2011 were extraordinary. It allowed us to get that extra sand on the beach. And every three hundred thousand cubic yards almost buys us another year, at least for ninety percent of Nagshead. And so that was, that's a good deal. But with each project, you monitor these projects, you gain some more understanding on what the limits of sand movement offshore is. What we've learned since 2005 is how deep the sand goes. We know that for a big hurricane like Sandy or Matthew, a lot of sand goes out beyond our sandbox. And then the question is, does some of that sand come back on? And the short answer is, yes, it does, but doesn't do it regularly. So we take these, this information, this empirical information, and we apply it into the next design. But, you know, it's, beach nourishment and erosion is not an exact science in that respect, because you're dealing with sediments, uncertainty of wave directions, uncertainty of which way the sand is going from one year to the next, so.
And with all this uncertainty, they can come in at sixteen million dollars less next year with the cost of inflation and uncertainty of diesel and the uncertainty of labor and the uncertainty of anything, cheaper and guarantee that price, and you feel certain about that.
Well, the bids are structured such that if they, if we sign a, if the town signs a contract with Great Lakes for 2019 construction, they will be bound by that bid. Just like in Buxton, they signed a contract with Dare County, and Weeks Marine, despite not getting the job done quickly, abided by that budget. In fact, they went into penalties, so.
Which on the surface explains that there's so much fluff built up into the cost that at the fifty-two million dollar price, that there's an exceptional amount of fluff that could be negotiated.
Well, possibly so, but again, you need to talk to the dredging companies about that.
Okay.
Because I'm not privy to their bid structure.
I don't know how prepared you are, since you, but since you brought it up, I wouldn't have asked this, and not anticipating that you would have been prepared for the question. But since you brought up the groin issue, I mean, you mentioned the Achilles heel several times. We recognize that. You mentioned a groin. So if you could address just a little bit, if there was a way for us to get permission to build such a structure, how does that fit within timing for re-nourishment projects and the construction thereof? And what mitigating, what mitigating work could be done as part of that, either as part of nourishment or construction, to reduce the erosion to the south of that? Because that will be our neighbor's primary argument, is that the risk of erosion south of the groin.
Well, normally, when you apply for a groin in jurisdictions that allow them, such as South Carolina, you have to combine the construction of a groin with nourishment. As far as doing it in conjunction with this particular project, that's, to me, it's a nonstarter, because it would just delay things by years, even if you were allowed to do it. Your legislature here in North Carolina approved four specific groin locations, Figure Eight Island, I think, and Ocean Isle Beach.
They weren't specific at the time, Tim. They approved four, but they were not specific.
I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, you're absolutely right. And so these four communities applied, and some are still waiting through for permits to get them, as I understand. So that would be a very long, drawn-out process. As far as what it would do for your project, I think I've stated before in a number of reports, if you can reduce the erosion rate at the southernmost mile of shoreline by more than fifty percent, you've gone a long way to extending the life expectancy of the entire project by just retaining more sand or slowing down the sand. We're not talking about eliminating the passage of sand down coast. Once the groins are filled to capacity, sand going down coast is just going to keep going. Your situation is not unlike some others that we're working with, where there's a huge disparity between the erosion on the down-coast end and the erosion up here. And by placing a groin in the middle of that cell, sure, you're still going to have down-coast erosion, but without a project, you have high erosion. And that's the case at the national seashore, because of the inherent dynamics of the shoreline down there. Ideally, you want to have a groin where you're going into an area that's naturally accreting, so you minimize those effects. But we don't have that possibility here.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of David? David, correct my memory, since you worked with the Shoreline Committee, wasn't the presentation that was made to the board talking about a huge amount of sand being put in Reach Four versus the rest of the reaches? Didn't Commissioner, former Commissioner Rassenberger talk about having a massive amount of sand in Reach Four?
Yeah, and Tim can go ahead and correct me on these amounts. My recollection is, starting at the north end, Reach One was about thirty cubic yards per foot of beach fill placement. Reach Two was, again, thirty cubic yards of beach fill placement. Reach Three End was about ninety cubic yards per foot of placement. And then in Reach South, Reach Three South, and Reach Four was somewhere between a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty cubic yards per foot of placement. I will have to go ahead and verify those numbers, but generally, that's my recollection.
Thank you, I'll just.
I recall some conversations that we actually had with the superintendent, could we put so much sand that it encroached on the Park Service property? So that, you know, absent a groin, we could anchor it with a huge amount of sand?
Yeah.
And putting the taper further out and not abruptly cutting it off?
That's why, I just wanted to make sure my memory was correct, that we were putting a whole lot less to the north than we were putting to the south.
That is correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Tim, you said forty, about forty percent of the total will go in Reach One, and sixty percent in Two, Three, and Four?
I'll have to look up the exact, but again, we're trying to take advantage of that net north-to-south transport and let it feed through the system.
Suzy?
Again, my question is financial.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Not got financial questions as well.
All right, are we finished asking engineering questions at this point? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
So we've set the tax rate, and based on this plan, and our portion is twenty-two million, and a portion of that will come from the county beach nourishment fund, approximately fifty percent. And then we have the FEMA portion. Is that a reimbursable? Do we pay it, and then they reimburse?
For FEMA? Our understanding is that they will reimburse us up to seventy-five percent. And then with the completion of the project, then we get the other twenty-five percent. And the float between, we pay it and they reimburse us, yes. And so we need to finance that, what we're calling the float, which is two different things. It's, A, first, the twenty-day or one-month turnaround between when we pay it and they reimburse us back. And then, secondly, we need to finance the float, which is that backside of the twenty-five percent, which we have to hold out on getting until we're done. And the reason for that is because it puts our fund balance in jeopardy, because the financing for the re-nourishment project is predicated on a certain fund balance. And when we start dipping into that for other things, then that puts the financing for the original project in jeopardy.
So we anticipate receiving FEMA funding, but we don't yet have the final congressional approval.
That's correct.
So we're, even if we're talking about a thirty-six million dollar project, regardless of the year, whether it's more sand, less sand, financially, what can we do?
The LGC won't approve the FEMA financing without a letter of proclamation.
So all we can count on is the twenty-two million? We can finance that.
We can, again, yes, we can't, we won't get any, without the letter of proclamation, we can't do the financing for the FEMA part, and the LGC won't approve that FEMA financing. So we wouldn't do that until we got that letter of proclamation. So, you know, we need to be prepared to go to the LGC, hopefully in June or July, with or without the FEMA project, because no matter what, we need to sign a contract before the bids expire. And we can't sign a contract without LGC approval.
But we can anticipate the LGC approval of twenty-two million?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
But not the excess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There is nothing set in stone about the tax districts, correct? I mean, we can change the tax districts, as well as we can change what we want to charge within the tax districts?
Well, there's a north, the north and the south MSD, as far as, you can charge separate tax rates for the north and the south.
If you wanted to, you can, the rates are only good for a year. You can, the board said seventeen and a half for the payback of the cost of the project, which you can change with the adoption of the budget. And the MSDs are set, there's a process you'd have to go through if you wanted to combine or decrease. If you wanted to create four MSDs, you'd have to go back through that process, which would require a proclamation, to, you'd have to approve an ordinance at two board meetings. There's a thirty-day timeframe for posting the resolution. So you, it's easier to adjust the tax rate, but there is a process for amending the MSDs.
Okay, so if we change Reach One from Eighth Street, I mean, from Bonnet Street to Eighth Street, that means we'd have to go through the MSD?
That you would have to go through the same process, practically, the same process for establishing a new MSD to extend it.
But if we wanted to charge the northern portion a certain amount, and the southern portion a different amount, let's say, charge the northern portion one and the southern portion two, that would be a fairly simple process?
You would do that with the adoption of the budget in June?
And then can we add another, like, penny or two pennies or whatever to the general tax rate for this without any problem?
Politically, but, but yes.
I don't care about that, I mean, no, I mean, there's nothing that we'd have to go through exactly the budget process.
It's no different than raising the general fund tax rate, and an MSD is the same yearly process.
I think we, as a board, would be remiss if we don't look at alternative financing within the town for how we should charge, just like everybody else has done with insurance. And, you know, I have no problem, like, doubling or tripling the tax rate for the southern end and keeping the rate the same or lessening it at the northern end, personally. That's just me thinking and thinking about how we might be able to fund this, because the people at the southern end want it, and they can, you know, if they want it, are willing to pay the insurance, that's what this is, this insurance. Maybe we need to change our insurance structure. And I also think people that live west of the beach road are underpay their share.
Just, I know you know this, but just for clarification purposes, if you were to do that, what is represented in, via Reach? Reach One is the northern MSD, and Reaches Two, Three, and Four are the southern MSD. So you would be, if you did that, you'd be taxing Reach One at a rate, and Reach Two, Three, and Four at a separate but same rate.
Okay, thank you.
The dividing line of Reach One and Two, for clarification, is it Gulf Street?
Yes.
Not Gulf Street, Gulf Street. Gulf Stream Street, just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And the other, just, the board considered this very thing back in 2011, and the, because you had two MSDs then, and you had the ability and the authority to tax at two different rates. Then it was decided, if memory serves, that based on, everybody gets ten years' worth of sand. It may be less sand, and it is less sand in Reach One than it is in the others, but it's ten years of protection. But that was, that was the rationale behind one tax rate.
Thank you. We're closing in on ninety minutes, and it looks like everybody may have gotten most of their issues out, at least for the moment. Mike? Renee?
Okay, right now, I think we'll have, need to have another meeting or something.
Yes, I think that's right. Suzy?
I'm good for now.
Okay.
I'm between lunch and me.
You're pretty close. You're pretty close. All right, Cliff, anything to close this?
Well, the, to close this, I think the board had set this meeting as your, as your time to determine whether or not you were going to declare a project in eighteen or nineteen. And I don't know if you're prepared to make that decision now, based on the recent events and the, you know, the erosion that we've experienced since you predetermined this is your date. I know that the property managers are watching this, and they're wanting to know what to tell people going into the summer. I don't know if you want to maybe think about this, if you're ready, if you need to go to the mid-month, but that, this was the advertised. to the mid-month, but that, this was the advertised date for making that decision.
It was, and part of that, I think, was based on FEMA and, and the bids. And you've indicated that there's a little bit of flexibility in how long the bid might be available. And I do understand that concern about, for rental companies, but my sense is not that this board is ready to make that call today. Am I correct in that?
Doesn't sound like to me we're going to get anything from FEMA back in time enough to make a decision unless we determine it's a separate project. Because I'm looking at, if my notes are correct, it's not going to go to DC until May. So that's way beyond the window. That is, I hate to say that, and the board would have to decide either we're going to do one without FEMA or we're going to do one with FEMA.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Renee.
Is May the window or, because I think there's been some discrepancy there, or is it really like early June?
Well, the, the reason for the 15 days was to give us some time if FEMA, if we don't have an answer from FEMA in the beginning of May. And so we, preferably, we go to the LGC in June and we're in the contract regardless one way or the other. But, Amy, am I correct that the, that May meeting, in order to get approval from the LGC, we would have to have the board approve the contract in May in order to go to the LGC in June? Could they approve the contract later in May for a July LGC?
Could the board approve, I'm sorry, say that again?
In the May meeting, we're scheduled for the board to approve the contract.
Right. A lot of approvals and res, yes.
And if, if we didn't have the FEMA approval at that meeting, could we get the board to approve the, award a bid later in May and make the July LGC?
Well, we also have to take in mind the financing, the thing that expires the fastest is our financing quote. That expires within 45 days. So we can certainly time all the approvals and the financing quote to come in through mid-May and get that July 10th, I think, LGC date.
So I, I think the answer now is you don't have to make this decision, even if you decided, you'd still have to award a bid later on. So even if you decided today you weren't nourishing in 18, you're not awarding a contract for some time from now. So I think the answer is we're shooting for the first meeting in May for you to award a contract?
That's what I was wondering.
If not?
Do we have that much time to?
Yes. And then, but we do have time, if we don't have the FEMA approval, we may have to call a special meeting. But we have time after that first meeting in May to award the contract.
And in the meantime, what should we be doing? Lobbying our representatives?
Yes, ma'am.
About FEMA making a decision so it doesn't cost all of our taxpayers a significant amount of money?
The, by, by not having the FEMA project as a part of this project, we're, we are jeopardizing about $4 million in lost savings because these projects were combined. If we were to bid later the FEMA project, we wouldn't see the, and it, God forbid it didn't go to the low bidder for this project, you could conceivably have two contractors working at the same time and you're paying double the mobilization.
Which is, on this one, is what, 8 million?
Yes, ma'am. And so therefore, I don't think you could bid the FEMA project as a standalone project and get it under $16 million.
My question is going to go back to, are we going to be approving a contract that includes FEMA, betting on the con? Are we going to be approving a contract with a definitive answer, yes or no, from FEMA?
Before we go to the LGC, yes, we.
That was my question. It has nothing to do with the LGC. It has to do with, are we going to sign a contract with a company if we don't have a definitive answer from FEMA and committing ourselves to an extra $14 million if we don't know we're going to get it or not? That's my question.
And I think that's a question for the board.
And that's, I think that's a discussion the board has to have because we, we don't have the money to pay the $14 million if we sign a contract with a company and we're not sure we're going to get the money. I think we have to have a definitive answer before we can sign a contract.
Is that in the contract that we have those options?
We've talked about this, we've talked about the financing and approaching that in two separate parts and establishing no later than dates. I know that we've spoken with our legal about how we could address this contractually and from the financing side. There's still some answers that we need to get, some clarification, before we can give you a definitive answer on how we move forward, either town only or town plus FEMA. And I think we'd be prepared within the next several weeks in order to get you definitive answers on this in several scenarios in moving forward.
Thank you.
I think we've got probably an hour more discussion on finance and I'd like to eat.
Okay. I think, let me ask this. I'll ask Cliff. We do need more discussion on this, obviously. Do we need a second meeting this month or do we need to be prepared to do this at the, at the May meeting?
Well, based on what I've heard you discuss here, it almost sounds like you need a budget workshop for this to determine, are you going to split the MSD going into next year and how does that affect the financing? I don't think we'll be in a position in mid-April that we may be able to explain some more, but we're not going to be able to give you definitive information in an April 18 meeting to make a decision.
Okay.
Because we want to have FEMA.
Right, right, okay. So then the thing that we need to do as a board, it sounds like, is be in contact with our legislators pretty aggressively.
Yes, sir.
Meaning going to see them, I think, and making calls and leveraging whatever contacts we have with them. And I'm prepared to do that. I assume the rest of the board is as well. All right, so is there anything else that we need to do before we leave this agenda item today? All right. Thank you all very much for that. And thank you, Tim, for attending our meeting today. Next item on our agenda is the Board of Commissioners agenda. Does anyone have any items? I see none. I will go ahead and note that we have a couple of appointments that we talked about making to the Fireman's Relief Fund Board and Arts and Culture Committee. They've been pushed back to the May 2 board meeting. And I don't have any other items except to encourage us to pursue this legislative action that we've just discussed and we will talk further about that. Any other business, Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In that case, a motion to adjourn to the Stormwater CIP workshop would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. And this will be following, the board is going to break for lunch at this point, I believe, and then, and then begin that workshop. Okay? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. We are adjourned until we begin our Stormwater Workshop.